To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. We will, we're just working our way through the budget. We have special meetings. Tomorrow night also, we will be breaking probably around nine o'clock for a short executive session, possibly reopening to open session. We were, we started on Monday night and we had gotten up to DPW. Before we begin, since this is a special meeting, I know Alex, it's a little difficult for him to get here on time. I just wanted to check with everyone about meetings next week. Are there any problem with any meetings next week for executive session only?
Not that I'm aware of, Marie.
No? You're fine? Are you okay too?
I don't know yet.
Oh, okay.
Next week is the seventeenth, eighteenth?
We have a regular meeting on the seventeenth, so I was looking at the eighteenth, we're doing the joint meeting and then we'd finish up with our own meeting. And I just want to know if we really need it in regards to negotiations nineteenth or twentieth, okay with you also?
And the school building committees meeting the twentieth.
So the twentieth would be no good, but do you need to be?
Yeah, he could come with the finance committee meeting.
Okay, so we look at the-
But I'm on the school building committee too, so I can-
Yeah, I know, so the eighteenth and nineteenth. And did you ever hear from the Senator's office?
Yes, but no confirmation of dates.
Okay, I'll try to follow up on that. Does anyone have any questions on the areas we had covered before on the last meeting? Or are you all comfortable going into the DPW next? So, Department of Public Works, page 104. I like the organizational charts. That's, you didn't have that before the GFOA, right?
Marie, I'd actually been looking at the spreadsheet budget.
And, um, did you get the, the spreadsheet one finally, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I copied, I've got a copy.
So you feel more comfortable looking at that one?
Well, I, you know, we can look at whatever we want. It doesn't really matter, but the numbers are the same, right, Paul?
Hopefully. They're supposed to be. I'm pretty sure that they are. I don't know if you want us to explain the salary jumps there, but, um-
Yeah, I was, I was trying to match those, Paul, but-
You, you, you almost wouldn't be able to match them, because what, what happened is that, again, I think people were aware that we were doing this allocation process for about a year now. And what Mike, what, what happened is that the DPW Director Mike Rabel originally gave me a budget that did not make any changes in it to any of the allocations used for any of the DPW staff. You know, so then I spoke to him, I said, "Mike, we, you know, we started this process. We need to get this process involved within the budget." And then he gave me a reallocation based upon the year's history of, of the allocations that his staff had provided. And he had given me a much different budget. What I did is I lined those two budgets up, the salary budgets, those two salary budgets up, and I took one-third of the difference between what he originally had submitted, which was the old allocations that we had used, you know, in FY14, let's say, versus the allocation history that he had developed over the period of FY13 and some of FY14. I took one-third of the difference to make that move.
So we're gonna do it three years, we're gonna move-
Basically, do it in three years. Again, we have one years of history. We couldn't tell you if that, you, one year of history is a normal year, anomaly, or anything like that. But it moves about, the whole change is about a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And most, most of the change ended up being between the general fund and the sewer, quite honestly.
Which way from?
From, from the sewer to the general fund.
So we'll see a drop in the sewer?
You see, you're gonna see a drop in the sewer allocations for, for, for wages.
Would you say a hundred and what thousand?
The total was a hundred and, uh, hundred and seven, six, twenty-four. And we're basically taking one-third of it, or about thirty-five, five.
But some of the others stay approximately the same?
Some of them stay, because, like, people, certain people, like, I forget what you, what, what it was, grounds maintenance, they don't really get involved, they're DPW employees, and they don't really get involved with the water sewer aspect of it. So a lot of those folks stayed exactly where they were. They were only the people who actually do have multiple responsibilities, they're labor force.
Equipment operators are the big ones, because, um, the guys who can operate the back, backhoes and bucket loaders are usually the most often deployed on water and sewer jobs.
And then obviously the administration and the clerical also.
But the one, okay, here's, here's what I was looking for. So, I, I didn't do all the salaries, but I did, did just Mike Rabel's. And there's, it's split into six areas, the way I see it. And tell, that's why I'm asking, not telling. Highways, grounds, buildings, water, sewer, and sanitation, recycling.
Right, right.
Okay, so those are the six, the, the six areas, right?
Correct.
You had a, a percentage distribution here, right?
Back, back in, what page were we reading, one now?
Uh, page one?
One-twenty?
No, I, I'm looking at one-twenty, but it's, page one-eighteen, I think, is what you're talking about? Where the highway?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't just the highway. You, you had in here a percentage salary distribution.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. It's one-fifteen?
Yeah.
The FTEs.
Yeah, right.
Those FTEs unfortunately were not adjusted for this one-third.
Thank you.
Because you picked that up.
They, they didn't match, okay.
Right, right, they didn't match. Okay.
We will do that, we, obviously we know we have to do that. But these would only represent the prior allocations before this adjustment. So we have to get those adjusted numbers in there.
Okay, that's, that, that's what I noticed, that the, that the percentages didn't reflect the numbers.
I'm sorry?
These FY15 full-time equivalents don't match up with the one-third shift.
Oh, okay.
So we have to adjust it. They match up with the original allocation, you know, equal to FY14, or what we're currently at.
Yeah, and, and in fact, now that you, I mean, this, the sewer is high, is a higher allocation than the dollars would-
Right.
Okay, that was, thank you.
And again, we will continue this process, so, you know, even after the three years is up, I think what we'll do is we'll look at a three-year lookback period, and it'll just be minor tweaking after that, after that three-year period we made. But, you know, we should probably keep on top of it and make sure that it's allocated properly.
Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm dealing with this allocation thing too, it, uh, and I don't have a smile on my face about this. Because this, I would think since the beginning of time, this select board has been assured every year that these charges were valid and needed for repair, and it was documented, and there was background information. And the rates were appropriately set at that point to do that. And now we find out that apparently at no time was there any actual good, sound documentation behind the scenes that supported the water sewage figures that were coming forward and having the community pay for. And I, I have a great deal of difficulty even considering the, the possibility of taking money out of our budget now to put back into DPW to backfill where they were overcharging water and sewage previously and were not doing the work. And that's, there's no way around it, that's really what was taking place. The accounts were being overbilled. Because there is, if, if they weren't, they would have had detailed struck. Now suddenly, all of a sudden, one year we're saying, well, we don't have all of this going against it. Well, this, we were assured repeatedly, and I've asked several questions on this for accountability purposes, for enterprise accounts especially, because there, there is an impact outside of the normal budget, because this directly goes to the taxpayers, is the utility charge. And you can say it however you want, but we were taking money and using money and possibly not doing the work, and yet being paid for it. And it was supplementing the base budget in this, in this county, in this case, the DPW division. It was shedding costs over into another area. Now, it's, I don't care what you say about the practice, whatever you, the best you can say is it was extremely poor practice. And with the caliber of the management that we've had in this town for several years, I am very surprised to see that this practice was taking place.
Yeah, Richard-
It's unexcusable.
I, I, I wanna just interject for a moment, um, in that I wouldn't, I, I, I think the suggestion that they weren't doing work they're getting paid for is not entirely on the mark, because the work of the DPW, the projects, they all got done. And the cost to have the employees and their benefits and the equipment and the materials and all that stuff are what they are. Even though this comes out as an allocation of money, what it really reflects is an allocation of time.
I understand.
Um, so I think, I heard, what I heard you say was you're suggesting that we were taking money from the sewer utility to pay for the costs to run the department, but not doing the sewer utility work. And I, I don't think that's accurate. I think the work was being done. When I, when this came up, the first question I asked, Paul, was, you know, did our auditors have an issue with this? Uh, and, and they did not. And I know, in my previous experiences, you know, you have your time sheets that the employees fill out, and they are a reasonably accurate assessment of where time went. And I think we just, at the behest of, I think, the audit committee, I was told, they wanted to take a, a more detailed look at that. But the practice that had been going on in terms of tracking time for, for what's from the enterprise funds, what's from the general fund, it appears to have been consistent with most of the municipalities that I'm familiar with. I think that there was just a higher level of scrutiny requested by the audit committee, we did it. And I would say, you know, even though it looks like a high percentage jump, because of the allocations, the overall amount of money involved, comparatively speaking, you know, is, is not great. So I don't, I, I, I guess what I'm hearing from your tone and from your words is that there was some kind of untoward effort to defraud either the taxpayers or the ratepayers.
I don't think, I don't think I said it that way, but that was not my words.
Well, I, I inferred that. And so if I inferred that incorrectly, I apologize. I just, I just want to make sure that we're clear, and I know you know this. It's, what we're talking about is simply how was time allocated and tracked. And I think it's, I think it's a good growth exercise for the department to track this information more carefully. But I don't want to suggest that it was being tracked poorly before, it just wasn't as, as detailed.
Okay, well, regardless of what you're saying, unless you can give me five years of documented records tonight or tomorrow, that shows every work order ever worked against those accounts, and they match up at the end of the year, it still remains that you've come in and asked us to a time allocation now, because they're saying, well, we don't work that much over there, so we want an extra three-hundred thousand, whatever the total is, to cover the piece personnel that we've been paying under those accounts. And without any formal documentation, I can't buy into what you're saying. I can't prove-
How far back do the allocation percentages go? I'm sure they go ba, I'm sure they go back a long time.
They're, they were done within the DPW department on periodic occasions to come up with the prior numbers. These were then done from sometime after the town meeting, where we failed to get a consultant to come in to look at this. If, if that was, uh, May, May of two thousand and thirteen, if it was a year ago, or if it might have been May of two thousand and twelve even. Um, if it was two thousand and twelve, we started that process probably in the summer of two thousand and twelve. And we've had the fifteen month, you know, basically the fifteen months now. We couldn't get it in last year because we only had a small window when that budget process started. So this more concise allocation began, let's say fif, well, it's, it's eighteen months ago now, basically.
And we're talking, what, two hundred, how much is it?
How much is-
Two hundred and some thousand?
We were talking about the total between the original budget that was submitted by the DPW and the revised budget of a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
No, I'm talking about the amount of money that Stephen is saying that he wants to put back into the DPW because it was being charged against water and sewage, and that's no longer valid.
We're shifting-
Two hundred?
No, the, the, the total between the allocation that we're, we're currently on in FY14 to this revised allocation in fifteen, using those allocation percentages, we would be shifting a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Well, the, the figure that I saw, I thought was two hundred, in excess of two hundred thousand dollars.
I, 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 you'd have to show me where that number is, because I have a spreadsheet here that says a hundred and-
I'm talking about the, it's in his notes someplace, and the recommendation to increase the DPW budget, I thought it was by two-twenty-three, am I crazy on that figure?
There was something else that was included, you were talking about-
Yeah, that's the overall budget, that's not just for that item, Richard.
And the, so that included the high school forty-six thousand and also the-
Yeah, the long-term seasonal employee-
Okay, let's say it was a hundred thousand. Okay, a hundred thousand, that's what, two FTE, one and three-quarter?
Do, it depends where it is, we had two, reasonable number.
About two, so that's four thousand one hundred and sixty hours worth of labor. That's a sizable amount of labor. A sizable amount of labor, especially considering the size of those departments.
I don't, what's the point, Richard? The labor, the labor got done, the work got done.
No, but my point is exactly this. You have, not you, but it has been brought before this board year after year after year after year. Here is the rates we want for this year, and, and I personally have asked for two years, three years, I said, "Where is the documentation for that program? I want to see the workload analysis that says this is where this money's gonna be spent. I want to see the people you're putting against this." And we've been basically told everything is kosher, and then consequently, the rates are set on water and sewage accounts. And now you're coming in and saying, "Whoa, we've checked it now, and boy, we're not putting all this time against there." And this has been going on for years, Stephen, this is not because of you, this is before you.
No, I understand, I understand.
Okay?
Marie, if I can, Richard, you're, you're, you're right. One of the origins of this request, I think I was part of that, going way, way back, was that prior to two thousand and six, or whatever our charter took, took effect, we, we only had three departments down there. We had water, sewer, and highway. And, and in fact, water and sewer were separately funded from the highway, which came out of general funds. They had the separate water and sewer commissioners, they had, everything was different. And the, the, the director of the DPW at that point had two bosses, the water and sewer commission and the, and the select board. And some of the issues that, that arose from that, not the least of which was vehicle purchases and, and maintenance, led to the consolidation by which the DPW was under one umbrella. The complication was that when they did that, they added in grounds that had been part of park and rec, or part of the grounds that had been part of park and rec, and building maintenance, including the schools. Some of the building maintenance had been under DPW and some under schools. And when they did that, there was no allocation at all of our director's time to building maintenance or grounds, other than what was originally there. And I think it, it goes back at least four years, that when I was on the select board, you know, I'd said, "We've got a DPW director who's spending, at that time, an awful lot of time on buildings and grounds, and none of their time was being allocated." And so I think the, you're right, that we were over allocating to water and sewer. But it was a, a remnant of the fact that, that nobody ever moved it out of there into buildings and grounds, as opposed to somebody putting it in there arbitrarily. And the original question was, you know, was, what, how would those numbers arrive at their original allocations? And, and the answer way back when was, it was arbitrary. It was arbitrarily decided, and there were only three, and they essentially took fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five. And that's the way it stood for many, many, many years, until we started looking into this. So I, I agree with you, that, that the enterprise funds may in fact have been allocated more of people's times than were actually being spent there. But I suspect that there's a problem even now of saying, "Mike Rabel, how much time do you spend on the water department or the sewer department, because he's not keeping, you know, it's not a law firm, we're keeping track in six-minute increments here." I think at the end of the, the week or something, he was writing down his best, his best estimate. I, I think it's an imperfect process, and I, I agree with you, we've gotta do better. I think we're moving toward better. I just can't look back and say how badly we screwed up, because I know it was very badly. And there's nothing we can do about the problems we had in the past. I think moving forward, we've gotta just say, you know, we're gonna do a better job of allocating everybody's time and, and costs accordingly. And I think that was, we, we started down that road. So I'm, I'm agreeing with you, we did a lousy job, but I don't think that that's a reason to say we can't move forward.
I'm not saying we're not gonna move forward, I'm just not gonna reward bad behavior. And, and we had assurances, and that's what bothers me, because I, I had, and you know I've been very vocal on this, because I felt that there was never documentation. And I said, "Where is the documentation?" We've had computer maintenance systems. Every hour of every single maintenance worker, including all the management personnel at maintenance, can be tracked. At the end of the year, you can roll up and say exactly where they worked every single hour. It's just a matter of a code that they do on their time sheets. And in this day and age, we're in the twenty-first century, I, I, I just find it shocking that just a simple audit and review, especially since these questions have been presented to the division chief and to the previous town manager, in exactly that format, Mark. Where is the justification for this program? Where is the justification for any labor-driven program that is placed in this budget? All you've got is figures. You don't have outcomes, you don't have anything here that tells what they're gonna, you don't have historic data saying there was this many hours. And yet we keep coming back and asking for more FTE with absolutely zero justification for it. And it's all based on the fact that things will get better in the future, and we never look back to the past. And, and I don't know how we can continue down that road. That's not a road for success. If, if we refuse to go back and correct stuff, or at least now sit down solidly and say, "I want a detailed accounting of every single operation, not just this enterprise fund." And I know this enterprise, I feel comfortable. This enterprise fund has been used often for, not inappropriate purchase, but stretching. You know, equipment-wise, how much equipment has been built against enterprise funds that shouldn't be there. And we've taken it year after year after, there's snow plows and everything else, there's loaders, there, you name it. And we do very little of our own utility work. We get a major water line, you know as well as I do, we have a contractor in here doing the work. And yet we continue hitting this account for large chunks of money. And the record is there, you can go back on capital and look at it. And, you know, I, I just say, Mark, sooner or later, you've just got to-
Goes back ten years at least that I know of.
Yeah, you sooner or later, you have to say-
Every dump truck down there is twenty-five percent owned by the water department, twenty-five percent by the sewer department.
Yeah.
And fifty percent by the highway department, every piece of equipment.
And, and, you know, we, we finally stopped that practice two or three years ago. We raised cane about it, because we came to the board at that time, said, "You've got to stop this practice, it's not appropriate." These are enterprise funds.
I'm glad to see we're starting to move in the right direction and that we're, we're taking the first step. And what I'm concerned is, why are we, what is the three-year process? Because you said this is gonna take three years to finally complete the, is it because we have to keep measuring and going back?
Because the data's in, the data is, is a first estimate at best. I mean, I wouldn't want to take one year's worth of time allocation and change our whole budget, because if that year, which there were, there was, there was an inordinate amount of time spent on one thing, you're gonna skew one way, and the next year you skew back and, or we should be doing like we're doing with everything else is, sneak up on it. So take, and I think that's Paul's approach. If you take a, a three-year look back, no one year throws your allocations back. And probably we're gonna end, end up doing more than a three-year look back.
Are you, are you proposing that you have workload data to support these percentages? Actual workload data from last year, job orders and everything else that was done on water and sewage.
I don't know what the paperwork looks like, but they did track the time.
They, no, there were not work orders. My understanding is that they, every employee was required to submit a time allocation sheet. As I said, I'm, I think it was like one day a week. They looked at it one day a week. It was Wednesday of every week, they tracked it in that fashion, and they took the history of that over the fifty-two-plus weeks. One, one of the issues, Richard, though, i- is to go back and to do a work order system, is you also need a budget of X amount of dollars. If you have a work order system in place, and you have an inordinate amount of time, let's say, charged to water, because you have a lot of water breaks that year, you're going to need, you're gonna look at the budget, and you may be short that year in the budget, and you're gonna have to adjust it, because all your time is being allocated by that work order system. So the work, the work order system, I mean, it works in its your most accurate way, but you're, you're gonna have to do some over-budgeting, because one year you may have high water costs or water labor as opposed to, you know, highway labor, and, but you still need a certain budget within the water department to pay for that.
I agree with you. Work, work order systems and payroll systems are two different animals. And I totally agree with you, but the work order system is very succinct. It should be exactly what was done. In the payroll system, you're right, if you're doing an override back and forth, it has to float. It's impossible for it not to float. Either that, or you just block X amount of hours again and forget about it, and don't ever look back.
I don't think the work order system you're talking about is in place. I think that's, it will be in place once we have the system that I presented on before.
It's in place.
I'm not, I, I don't know, I'm not really aware that they're equipped to, to do that. I, I do want to make a general comment about the enterprise funds versus the general fund. Yeah, and I'm, I'm really not even talking about Long Island specifically, but generally speaking, um, most communities have the allocations that are based on historical experience with some ability to float, get, you know, because the budget is fairly consistent year to year, like Paul was just saying, you have to have some flexibility in it in case you have a year, a lot of water main breaks, a year without, with not as many, or variable circumstances depending on the work, the, the projects that get done. But the other factor is that in most communities, there are probably more ratepayers than there are taxpayers. Because your schools, or, not really schools, that's a good example here, but your tax-exempt entities have water and sewer bills. And so, you know, there is benefit to the ta, I mean, by doing this allocation, it is a, it may be a net rate reduction, but it is a net increase on the, out of the general fund. And so that's, you know, there is that factor to consider in this as well.
Okay.
Alex? You know, one, I, I guess I'm a little confused. Now, the percentages that, I understand the concept of this reallocation. I, and maybe I missed it, is there somewhere in this binder here that explains where the percentages are coming from?
There, no, there's not anything in that binder that would really explain it. I don't know if you were here when I tried to explain it earlier, but the original, Mike gave me two budgets. The original budget that he provided me was based upon the allocations that are currently in place, or were in place the last couple of years.
And, okay, and what I've heard from Mark is there was this fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five historical allocation. Are you talking about that, or are you talking about a different allocation?
The fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, when it comes to labor, I think Mark specifically said that for maybe equipment. But the fifty, twenty-five, twenty-five, there, there was thirty-three, 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 those were allocations probably done back eight, nine years ago. Mike looked at these a few years back, and he did tweak them in certain cases. A lot of it was tweaked in the administration portion. That even if you look at these, you'll see that for grounds maintenance-
And I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
I, I'm looking at page one-nineteen as an example. Okay, as an example, in FY12, we had zero of Mike's time charged to grounds labor in that fiscal year. And the same would probably hold true to some degree in the building maintenance. So at some point during the FY13 budget process, Mike looked at the allocations, and he made changes in how he was allocated for FY13. So in FY13 and FY14, we, we have, if you want to call it allocation A, that was now- if you want to call it allocation A, that was now being used for clerical, DPW administration, so on and so forth, off the salary.
So is each employee have an allocation or is it grouped together?
No, each employee has an allocation.
Each employee has an allocation?
Yes.
And that's based on, I guess, a sampling of Wednesdays? You said something about that?
The most recent is based upon a one-day-a-week sampling over about a 15-month period.
Okay. But that's not how it was before?
Correct.
Before that, it was, no, it was assigned by the staff of the DPW. The allocation was assigned.
All right. And that was just sort of a, a general sense of what it was, uh, of how people were spending their time generally. And, and I assume there must be some sort of spreadsheet or, or chart that has every employee with the allocation?
That's in here.
Oh, that's, okay.
Page 117 and 1, or 119, 116 and 17.
And that's the one that you said we need to correct.
We need to modify that as respective of the FY14.
Okay, all right.
The numbers for FY15 are not the new allocation, they're the old allocation in there. Okay? So those have not, the allocations have not changed from FY15 to what Mike has done. They've changed something, but they aren't-
Changed, right.
But they are not fully changed based upon-
Okay, so you'd have to add, all right.
You're going to send a corrected sheet?
We will correct this. By the time we have a budget from the select board, we will have these corrected. So this, when this is all redone, it will have all the corrections in it.
Okay.
And, um, so the, the cha, this increase of 107,000 dollars?
Yes.
You, um, that's to reflect this better data from the Wednesday sampling?
Yes.
Okay. And then I heard something last night about how it was going, uh, we're doing it over three years. And I guess that, I didn't quite get that. Was that to, like, we know where we should be, but we don't want to make those changes all at once?
We, we have data that is one period of time that we're not sure that's truly a reflection-
I see.
Of, you know, accuracy over a longer period of time. So we didn't want to jump in with two feet just at one time. So-
Based on this new data?
Correct. So what we'll do is we'll keep on tracking and we'll adjust. And it, you know, the goal is in three years, we'll be at the allocation that the three-year history says, and we'll keep rolling the allocations and the information forward.
What, what does that mean? You mean like that would be the, that would be the allocation we would use henceforth? Or would you be constantly reassessing?
Constantly reassessing based upon a three-year look back, at least a three-year look back period.
Okay, all right.
And Paul, are you going to change the methodology? Or are you just going to keep hitting the Wednesdays and keeping the same? Because I know we have the new software coming in.
I can speak with Mike. I mean, we probably should be getting a little bit more sophisticated and see if there is software that he could get in there. But again, as, as far as I knew, um, the folks were filling out specific, they, they created a time sheet that had all the allocations for all the different, um, funds or departments within the funds. And that's what they were submitting. And then he internally took a spreadsheet and did all the, the work in compilation.
You've, you've got a work order system down there. And it's been in place for several years. Just like school do, you can track every single hour of accomplishments in these programs. That's what they're designed for. That's the sole purpose of them, is to follow your programs and make sure your programs actually are reflected in what you're doing. And we've not been doing that. That, you know, like Paul, what Paul said, if they've taken a one, one-day-a-week sampling, I, I know it's, it's something, but it is, in the world of accounting and the world for program justification, that is so loosey-goosey. It's, it means very little. I, I have a question. You said recommended budget includes one-third of the total reallocation to phase in the change. Can you explain that? It's under your public works.
Would you, do you?
On, uh, it's way back on your justification statement, Stephen, back on 17, 17 of 212.
I mean, I'll, I'll try to do it again, but-
What was the question?
Well, the, the statement says the recommended budget includes one-third of the total reallocation to phase in the change. And this is in reference to the-
Right.
So the change, what I'm reading is the fake change would have been $321,000 if we did it in one year. So we're taking 107,000 this year and not moving another 214,000.
The full change is 107. We're only moving 35.
How could, no.
Whoa, that's-
That's different.
One-year allocation originally, yeah. Again, from my worksheets, what Mike gave you originally, he had-
Do the math.
So for the $200,000 increase in the DPW, there's only 35,000 because of the salary allocations, and the rest due to some, so that's different, Richard, from what you previously asked.
Yeah, we're, I have no idea because the only other figures you're showing that would be taken away from that would be the 20,410,46,735.
The general fund budget originally submitted by Mike was 1.44 million. With the one-year allocation process, it went up to 1,550. It's a $107,000 difference in the general fund. We are just, we're reallocating 35 of that 107 back to the general fund.
Oh, oh, so, so it's not going up 107, it's only going up 35?
It went up 35. The full change, had we all did it in one swoop, would have been 107.
Could somebody then tell me what, what the figures are on that page 17, 212 then? 17 of 212.
That was the, you mean, overall increase for the-
It said, it said there's, you're, you're requesting a 201,375 dollar increase more than FY2014.
Correct.
Could you tell me what that is for then?
Again, it is some of this increase, some of the allocation-
Okay, that's 35,000.
Right. Um, there are step increases in COLAs for collective bargaining agreements that are, that are in there. Um, there is $46,000 additional for the high school maintenance.
Traffic lights, 30,000.
Traffic lights is increased 30,000.
And where's that? Is that in here?
You have to look at the spreadsheet. I mean, it-
Okay, you'd have to go to the spreadsheet. Well, I mean, the reasoning at figures here, I thought it would be self-evident that these would, that these figures would substantiate that increase. Would you want to go back to every line on your spreadsheet to supplement that?
Yeah.
I just hit the highlights in this. That's what a summary is. I just hit the highlights. It does include every single item that went up.
Okay, I know it's a highlight, but it only represents half of the total increase. So it's, uh, you, you said $30,000, and yet you mentioned a $20,000 increase. So, and it, whatever.
Can we ask about some of those specific increases?
Sure.
For example, traffic lights? Why, why are we budgeting a $30,000, which is a 12.5% increase in the cost of traffic lights? I mean, the FY13 expenditure was 264,000. So how do we get away with budgeting 240 last year, this year? Well, we, we got to remember, we did the budget only six months into the fiscal year. So even though we ended up higher, you know, when we did that budget, you know, we didn't do it after the fact. Right, 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 right. But, but Paul, I mean, you look at the four-year history of this. It went from 254 to 240 to 264, you know, so it's bouncing somewhere around there. I mean, it went, from, from FY12 to 13, it went up $24,000.
I mean, some of that, it depends on how many light poles get knocked down in a given year. I mean, there are, there are variables in the cost, in the expenses.
Oh, what, what does light poles have to, get knocked down? They're not our light poles.
And traffic lights.
This is the electricity though.
Oh, you're talking electricity?
Yeah, this is electricity for, for street and traffic lights. This is just the electricity for lights, red, yellow, red, yellow and green, right?
Yep.
The, the, the other allocation, the other rationale is that, um, you, you may recall that there was some shifting from the parks, uh, utilities for pools and things of that nature. They're now being shifted over to the DPW. But would it go in that? It, it, it went into that with $30,000 increase. It's part of it. Because that's not just, okay, there's electricity for buildings and there's all the other electric meters is, which is what, so this is basically non-building electric meters? I think it's building. And- Well, there's a line, two lines above that. It'd be buildings. It'd be buildings. And, and some of the change is the, uh, the, again, the summer parks and rec stuff that was transferred over.
Went into the street and traffic light? First time on 118, 212.
Electricity is inclusive of the street and traffic lights. We got to stop using two sets of books. Seriously. I mean, for the last 20 years, we've used a spreadsheet system. We're now going to this thing. It doesn't, yours doesn't go back far enough.
You guys voted for us.
I understand that, but it doesn't go back as far, it doesn't have the same history. If we're looking at this historically-
Well, you can use this format and put more years on it.
Well, so we'll stick to-
Print's going to get a little smaller.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you may have to-
So I won't mention this page. We'll just stick to the spreadsheet.
Well, you can do whatever you want to.
Yeah. But, so does that include, um, the equipment as well as electricity?
Street traffic lights and- It's, it's, it's street traffic light and, and some buildings, yes.
Okay.
Again, the rationale that Mike has provided for this is the parks and rec transfer of electrical cost. And again, it's basically the pools. So then, I guess my question is then, if I go back, uh, in my case, a page or two, whatever is in the other one, shouldn't there be a commensurate reduction? No, because it used to be paid out of the parks and rec revolving fund. How the heck do they pull that off? That's a rhetorical question, not needing an answer.
That wasn't here.
Thank, no.
That's my answer.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's, the other, the other large increments, increases are obviously personal protective gear, which is a substantial jump based on, I assume, something we've identified. Is that at the water pumping station?
No, this is personal protective gears. And you'll see there's reductions in other, um, like other expenses and a few other, and if you look at the, both the general fund and the, um, and the enterprise funds, it's the same thing. Um, after we had the incident where we were cited for the trench box, uh, the, some of the division heads and some of the workforce got together and formed a safety committee, um, for, for the DPW. And one of their recommendations that we're following through on is rather than by kind of generic, um, having generic safety equipment, it's issuing each person their own bag of safety gear that has the necessary things in it, you know, like a rain suit, goggles, gloves, the whole thing. And making each person then responsible for the care of that bag so they can just grab their bag in the morning, have in the truck and not have to go back to get something. And so that's one of the techniques to improve safety that they've adopted.
Can I, can I share something with you? Would you accept a comment on that?
I'm sure you're going to make it anyway.
No, not necessarily.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I think you go right down the path you're going. You had, uh-
No, Richard, I'm, I'm teasing. In all sincerity, do you think it's a good thing or a bad thing?
No, I'm not in a teasing mood tonight. So, you were at the high school?
The total increase for highway expenses went up 33,475. Of that 30,000 is for the electricity. So there are, there are some minor increases in other accounts.
Say that again?
For the highway expense total, and I'm not talking, I'm not talking personal services, I'm just strictly talking expenses.
Highway expenses.
Highway expenses.
Yep.
The total increase is 33,475. I was just making a point, trying to make a point that of that 33,000, 30 of it is in that one line item for electricity.
You say heis, highway, or you-
Highway, yes.
It's like, you don't see it here, but I see it.
Yes, see, this is, this, take it, this.
No, but, you know, but, yeah, but you see here, you see 33,000 increase.
Right.
And you can see of, of the 30,000.
If you're looking at page 118, Alex.
Yep.
Towards the bottom of the page, you have, you have snow and ice as the bottom line. And if you go up two lines, there's a subtotal.
Yep.
That is a subtotal of the expenses. That if you look at the middle column, that's the current year's budget.
Yep.
644,000. And if you look at the last column, the 678, the town manager's recommendation, that's the difference of the 33,000 that I was referring to. And again, $30,000 of that is found in that one line item for electricity for street and traffic lights.
Now, if we make those changes-
You mean from 240 to 270?
240 to 270, correct.
When you say it's electricity for street and-
Yes.
Okay.
It's electricity.
Could we see any drops in that if we start the process of purchase and transition of the streetlights? Is it going to be too early?
And, and eventually that's the goal, is to get that line item to drop. Yes.
Since we're on this, I think I had asked about this before, and we've talked about, about the GPS administration. And it indicates that for FY13, there was $12,000 expended, and that in FY14, the budget was for 12,000. And I think, Stephen, you were saying that was inaccurate?
No, I don't think that money got expended, FY13 money. They, they haven't spent the money on GPS systems.
Because it was taken out, right?
I, I don't know that, I mean-
No, it says expended.
I know it says, but, yeah. I don't, I know they, I'm not aware that they, I know they don't have any GPS units in any of the trucks as we sit here today, so I don't-
So, I guess the question is, where's that money?
So.
I mean-
I, I'm going to have to say that the money was expended based upon my spreadsheet.
So, expended on what, though?
It, well, it, I'm hoping it was expended on GPS type of, of equipment to be charged to that line item.
So you'll get back to us on that.
I, I can check the exact, the exact expenditures out of that line item, but, you know, we try to track expenditures in the best fashion that we can. And if there's something that doesn't correlate with that text, then we need to tighten up our procedures internally in the accounting office.
Okay. So get back to us on that.
And FY14, it indicates there's $12,000 in the current budget.
Correct.
And that's what we were discussing the other day, that that was specifically taken out last March. Right?
Yes.
Remember, I mean, there was a big hoo-ha about getting the minutes and pointing it out.
It was specifically removed.
Right. So, so I would think that that's not right either.
Possibly. I differ.
So check on the 2014 also.
Were the, I don't know if anybody here had a chance to look at those minutes that were actually taken out because-
Yeah.
Okay.
It was.
Did you have a, would you remember the date?
I don't think, it was, it was in, it was in March.
I only say that because it looks like it remained within their budget when the budget was passed. And if that was an error on my part, that was an error on my part. But that's what is shown in our system at this point in time, that there is a $12,000 budget in that line item.
So Paul, I have a sort of general question. So, uh, so how do you, like, what is the information that you get from DPW that tells you that 12, so going back to FY13, GPS administration expended? What is it that you get that tells you that from DPW?
I'm going to look and I'm going to actually pull out the, the expenditures and look at the actual invoices that are charged there.
Goes back to the account number.
Right.
And, so you would actually have the, I mean, you're not just getting a summary from DPW?
No, I'm going to go back and actually, they have to give us the expenditures for us to charge accounts. So there, there are, there are expenditures against, against this account. I will look at those actual invoices.
Hmm, okay. Which I guess brings us to the current question of whether we want to have 16,800 for this current budget, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I was just going to, I mean, is this the time to discuss the rationale for it? Or, I mean, do you want to, or do you want to?
No, not as good a time as any.
Well, one of the things, I was thinking of doing those, we'd go through, we'd ask all our questions, and then we would deliberate on what changes we would like to have. So I know that some other things have already been mentioned. So if we could- So if we could get all our questions together, so we don't get stuck, and we'll, and then we can either start the deliberations the end of this evening, or tomorrow, depending on how much we get through.
Okay, so the process would be, I mean, I'm assuming, you know, Stephen is the proponent of this. He would be arguing in favor of it. I mean, is that what you anticipate? Or, or we would just take on what we have right now and vote, and we would discuss it and, and as you say, deliberate and vote on it, based on what we have, what, what we've been given so far?
Well, once we get the answers back.
March 18th, 2013.
Once we get the answers back, we would talk about what changes we would like, and.
I think, was there a vote?
There was a vote, and to remove it from the minutes. And my understanding is then it was stated, well, let him try to find, he's got plenty of money. If he wants it, he can get it somewhere else in his budget.
You know, then what could have happened then is that there could have been a transfer afterwards. If he had to find his own money, there could have been a transfer within his own internal budget where it may not have been appropriated within the budget?
That would, that would not have been the official ruling on that.
Well, we'll go back and look at it.
I'll be able to tell if there was a subsequent transfer also. If the original budget might have been zero, I'd be able to tell if there was a subsequent transfer also.
The hint, they wanted to keep, well, we'll talk about that later.
Okay. And so if there's gonna be any changes that we want to recommend in regards to town manager's budget, I thought we'd go through that and then deliberate and vote.
Well, not tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay, but I guess what I'm getting at is, I don't have so much a question about the $16,800. I mean, I understand that it's being proposed. What, the question I have is the argument in favor of it. I mean, and if, if that's, if that's it, then we can make our decision based on that. But I'm assuming that that's something that they want to do, and they'd like to tell us why.
Oh, yeah, that's a question. That's definitely a question you can ask.
I'm happy to address it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, well, I, I think I laid out the recommendation in the memo I had submitted in a previous packet. And I know there was a request for a link for a demonstration. The demonstration that I saw was a hosted online demonstration by Fleet Boss, which is one of the vendors that was shown on that memo. We can set up a demonstration for, either for a meeting or for any select board member, or any two select board members that want to come see it individually. I found the demonstration to be compelling, that, that the GPS units are a benefit to the town. And I know Mike Vrabel feels the same way. You know, it's more than just tracking what the vehicles are. I mean, they do a lot more than that. And, you know, certainly when there's, it's similar, you know, I guess it's analogy to go to questions about the finances. Paul can go back and look at the invoices and have the specific data. And Richard, I know you, you are always interested in being able to collect the most accurate data possible. If a question arises about how a vehicle is being driven, where it was being driven, you know, the route it took to go from point A to point B, the system gives us the ability to get that accurate data. And without it, you really don't have that ability. So I think that's basically a brief synopsis of why I think these are beneficial.
Okay, can I ask a question? So what I heard just now, Stephen, was that it's more than a track, it's more than for tracking vehicles, and that the system allows us to determine routes taken by a vehicle? Wouldn't that be about tracking a vehicle? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, it's not just where are they right now. It's, and, and I think, to me, the more, I mean, yes, knowing where the vehicles are is an important function. I think we all can agree there are reasons, both from an operational standpoint and from a, you know, management standpoint, why that's an important thing.
Knowing where the vehicles are.
Knowing where the vehicles are.
Okay.
But it's, I think I use the analogy of the black box from an airplane. The GPS units essentially do the same thing, where they track, how fast were they going? How much did they accelerate? How did they, were they braking aggressively? You know, how long were they idling? Questions of the, of the operation of the vehicle. And a vehicle driven aggressively isn't gonna last as long as a vehicle driven conservatively. And so it helps, you know, develop better techniques for training for drivers. And, you know, if someone, if someone has a history of driving aggressively with a town vehicle, then they don't get to, then they wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed to drive.
Okay. So, I mean, I understand that there's information. But what, what do you anticipate Mike Vrabel or somebody else in DPW doing with that information? Like, how would that affect their ability to do their job?
Um, I, I mean, there's so many different ways you could use the data and the information. The system.
Well, can you give me the top three? I mean.
We get a call from someone saying there's a branch down. Rather than get on the radios and figure out who is where, they can get on the computer, see where everybody is right then, and call the person who's closest to it and say, there's a branch down over here. Go collect it. For plowing, if someone, if a resident calls and says, you know, my street hasn't been plowed yet, then they, rather than radio the guy and say, where are you? They can just look on the computer and say, ma'am, he'll be there, he's on, he's at this section of his route. He'll be there in 15 minutes. Again, it's the same thing where if fuel costs don't seem to line up with, you know, the hours on the vehicles, we can see, well, were they always driving where they're supposed to be driving? Were they taking the most direct routes? Things like that.
And how many of these units would you be able to get for, I mean?
I think my memo had 40, 40 units, something like that.
And I think Richard had asked the question of what, how frequently the information is delivered.
Yeah, that would be something.
You call it a pulse rate?
Yeah, that would be something that you could certainly get from this demonstration, if you wanted to learn more about it.
Well, on the proposal, though, what, that's what was the question, this.
I think you, since we'll be voting on this in the next few days, if you could find out what the pulse rate was, that'd be one of the questions.
Well, I, I honestly think that that is a, kind of a small gradient piece of information to have. I think the overall capacity of these systems is, I mean, the pulse rate is an important component. I agree with that. But it, there's, saying the pulse rate doesn't put the thing in context. A pulse rate, here's a pulse rate, what does that mean to the people who don't, aren't really familiar with the systems?
Yeah. Richard, Richard will know. So if you could get that when we find out the other GPS information.
Because I guess the, the point is that if it's not very frequent, then your ability to know where the vehicle is, is diminished, right? Which would go to the very rationale for getting it.
Sure.
Am I, am I missing something?
No, I just, no, I don't even know if I'm missing anything. I guess that's an accurate statement. I, I guess I, it seemed to me that the systems do work. I don't know anything about the pulse rate.
Have you ever managed an operation had GPS?
No.
So you're, you're basing your assumption from the video that you saw on TVs, if you, there's no practical, nobody in your division has any practical experience, even a DPW, is anybody ever ran a GPS fleet?
No, not, I mean, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll get those questions for us.
Dave, can I ask some questions now?
Yes, uh-huh.
Not even on GPS? I'm a little puzzled, Stephen, on the sidewalks. That we have been told for the last three or four years that Mike was spending $5,000 a year on sidewalk repairs. And I'll see figures that are $2,400, $3,400, and now he's coming back and requesting $15,000. It was back in 2000, FY12, I think, is when there was a capital infusion of, help me, Mark, 75? Capital infusion in 12 or 13 of $75,000 for sidewalk repairs?
I thought it was more than that.
It was more than that? 125?
Last year we did.
And we've, and it's in, I think you'll find it in this year's capital program also. There's a request.
Yeah, I think I saw that. It talked about it having been done.
Yeah, so I, you know, it, it, it's, and I understand there's likely an explanation for it, but it just seems inconceivable to me that we had 5,000 program before and before and before, and then we show back and we only expended $2,400 with the shape, especially with the consideration of the shape of our sidewalks in this community. And then 3,468 FY, last year, in, in this budget, I would have thought it would have been at least 5,000 plus all the money, because there's an unlimited amount of sidewalks. Yes, Paul?
What we're doing here is separating the operating budget, which you're only seeing here, from the capital.
Right.
So your other expenditures, of your $75,000 appropriations, will not show up in this line item?
I agree.
Okay.
Oh, I know that.
Okay.
I'm talking about the base dollars.
Okay.
Sitting here that have not been expended, and that we're asking for an increase of going to 15,000, when we've got also $75,000, $80,000 in the other one. And we've only been spending about $2,400 a month, when we said we were spending 5,000 a month. So, you know, I ask you, maybe you can set me straight on that, on how we would justify that. The, the other item, which is, it has some questions on our street sweeping. I remember reading in the budget package that we have gone to the ice additive, the calcium chloride additive, and we've quit using sand, and there was anticipation of this move would save us on sweeping. And yet our sweeping, they're asking for more money in sweeping, which again draws a question mark on the, on the programming aspects of it. This drain maintenance, is this a contract drain maintenance? Or is this drain maintenance that we're doing in-house? Can you, can you explain what that 20 or what the 17,000 is for?
I think they actually do both. They do have a contractor working side by side with, with their, with their gentleman.
Okay. Do you know how much that contract is, Paul, by any chance?
I, I.
I think it's around the 22,000.
Yeah, I, I don't know. And I don't know if the contract is a, is a, is a dollar level or a per hour basis. I'd have to look to see how much was, I think your question might be how much was expended, maybe, on the contract?
Right. And it is, would all of that be showing under this line item? No, it's be showing, it's showing under catch basin cleaning. That's where the big goose egg, where we are, I would assume most of that is contracting costs?
Catch basin cleaning, yes.
Right. And I, I bring back to the discussion we had a couple of years ago, Mark, when we had this, you know, we've got this massive sewage truck, and we say we can't afford the FTE to run the truck out there to do the catch basin cleaning, yet we can put $30,000, $40,000 into a contract. It doesn't make sense to me to have this equipment and still pay that much money, when the equipment.
My understanding, Richard, was, was different from that, though. It was that, that the catch basin cleaning had a, had a short window that they wanted to do it in. And so they supplemented our sewer jet with contractors.
That's right, right in the middle of the summer.
The sewer jetter does more than just clean basins, obviously.
I know.
The catch basin, the, the catch basin cleaning contractor, when you look at what it costs to do it per catch basin, is much more efficient. From a price standpoint, that's probably tied to wages and benefits that they provide for their employees versus ours. And so they can get more done for less than our guys can.
Okay. And I won't, I wouldn't disagree with a bit of that. But we had the Director of Public Works sat in there and said that if you've got a $250,000 truck and so they don't have enough people to run it, to do catch basin cleaning.
I, I think they do, just not every day.
He said in front of this group, I cannot, I cannot man the truck.
All I can tell you, Richard, is that we just received an award, and you were at the lunch.
I understand we've got an award, and I'm very, very happy about it.
From our insurance carrier for being, from going from one of the worst in the state for backups.
I am thrilled.
To one of the best.
I'm absolutely thrilled with that. But that wasn't for catch basin cleaning or running a straight budget.
But it's, it's, that $250,000 piece of equipment is a big component.
I am thrilled about it. I've said it. I don't have to say it again. I totally support it. But you know, you've got a, you've got an automobile study that questioned the validity of even having it in this community on an ownership basis. Not the fact you use it, but on an ownership basis, it's a very difficult piece of equipment to justify. I'm looking at the $37,500 that we are putting into catch basin cleaning every year, and we've got a piece of equipment down there that is perfectly capable of doing it, this sitting item.
So you would, your question for Mike is, what is, what are we contracting?
The question has been, why are we spending $37,500 when that would buy, how many seasonals?
Yeah, one and a half, maybe?
Oh, come on.
You'd probably get two people. Yeah, you'd probably get two people for six months.
Okay, so that's the question on catch basin cleaning, to do the comparison on why the $37,500 is more effective than two seasonals. And was there another question on the drain maintenance?
Well, that was, we were talking about the drainage fees too there, but that's, that's a minor issue. The rentals and leases, what is that? Why is it going, what's happening there? Do you know?
Rentals and leases, right.
It's gone from 11, $1,100 to 5,000?
I, I think it, it's an amount that he put in a few years ago. If he does need to get equipment, and he doesn't currently possess, that he has a budget to acquire that equipment on a short-term basis.
One of the key items there, and I don't know what that was, what that's worth in this increase, is trench boxes. Because the ones we have aren't suitable for bigger jobs. And so United, just over the line, rents trench boxes. And I think that's one of the things they want to be more diligent about.
I guess my question then would be what was expended, or what's he's expecting to be expended in 2014?
And I think that's one of the missing points here, if I can step in, is that we have the FY14 modified budget, but we don't have FY14 anticipated expenditures. And for some of these items, Richard, what we don't know is, was $5,000 also budgeted in FY12 and 13?
Oh, true, true.
And then, you know, so maybe we've historically always budgeted 5,000, and historically always spent 1,600. The problem being, if you only budget 1,600, and you really gotta go out and rent something, you don't have the money in your budget to do it. And so I, you know, we're comparing actuals with budgets.
You've always got money in a budget this size to do stuff. But if every item is overprogrammed that much, it's scary. Because that money is being spent someplace, Mark, at the end of the year. It wasn't spent on equipment.
No, I was gonna say, Mark, to answer your question, I mean, I have information what the projection is for 14. It's $4,500 is what he has projected for 14. Thank you.
You see what I mean, Mark?
Yeah.
And if the money wasn't spent, it should have been turned back to the general fund. Have you ever had money turned back to the general fund from DPW?
Absolutely, yes.
How much?
I would have to go back in my records to look at 13. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
We're talking $100,000, $200,000?
Talking tens of thousands of dollars. And it goes up and down from year to year, is my recollection. But I couldn't tell you exactly what line items or anything like that, but.
More of a chunk change on a $4 million budget. Nothing major, Paul?
No. Again, if it was $100,000, I'd be surprised if it was that much.
Okay.
But I don't have that information with me.
And the replacement equipment down there is minor equipment, I assume? Stuff that falls outside of the capital program?
Right.
No anticipation. It's just a goose egg type approach. And it's just they're putting in a sum, saying we may do this. But there's no actual list of anticipated purchases for this year.
I do not have.
That you've ever seen or anybody's seen. It's just, just a total, okay. The overtime.
Where is, Richard?
That was on 19 to 12. Underground's maintenance. This is not a bad increase. I think that, I think that the more major increase I saw over here was on one of the other ones. I forget which one. Maybe it was under, was it under highway? No, it's not highway. I saw one that looked like it was a pretty sharp increase. And I was wondering why it took off, but I can't find it now, so I'll just pass over.
It was under town buildings maintenance.
Was that it?
You betcha.
Yeah, there was one that had a fairly sizable. Oh, let's see. The employee training, $1,000. That's, that's pathetic for a division that large.
Where's that line at?
It's on 119, oh, excuse me. I'm on, I'm on your spreadsheet, I'm on your sheets in the book here. It's under, let's see if I can find it here. It would have been under just expenses, period.
I guess he wants to answer. Should we stick to one?
No, no, we don't have to, but, but it doesn't make it very easy for anybody to try to follow us.
Let's, well, Mark, does anyone else have any other questions on highway, before we move to grounds? Okay? And on grounds, any other questions on grounds? Okay. And that's where you have that seasonal worker put in.
Correct. Now, is that a seasonal worker would benefits?
It would not be with benefits.
That's strictly seasonal?
Correct.
No pension system?
No pension, no health, no vacation.
Long-term seasonal, brought back every year? Automatic, or?
Not automatic.
Okay, so it's a real seasonal?
Correct.
Okay, that money could disappear next year, then the position could disappear. Right.
And related service forestry, does that include the extra money we put in because of the, or is it? Does that include the extra money we put in because of the, or is it usually always that high?
It, you may recall that it used to be a budget of about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. You can see that in FY thirteen, with the backlog of the storm, pumped it up pretty high and there was three-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. We basically have it somewhere in between twice as much what we had prior to the October storm, but certainly not as much because some of that money, or that money that was expended in FY thirteen was catch-up money and storm-related. And, you know, we have a lot of that already taken care of.
Now, so my question is this, do we keep track of how that line item is spent and is it, how much of it is in planting trees and how much is still grinding stumps and...
I don't have that, I don't track it in that detail. But I'm sure if we looked at the invoices, or Mike may track it in that detail. I don't have it tracked in that detail.
So if we asked for that, he should have that available, right?
He would have, he would have that. Or again, like I said, he'd look at the detailed invoices and get the information.
But that's counting, cutting down trees, trimming trees, grinding stumps, plantings, everything, that's all that.
Right.
So, can I follow up on that question?
Let me see, the expended, and we don't, do you have the rough expended for two thousand and fourteen on that?
They've expended through the end of February ninety-one thousand, five hundred, and they have encumbered in, you know, the contracts that we have with certain vendors, another hundred thousand dollars. That would leave about thirty-two thousand dollars that's unencumbered.
And what do you mean by encumbered?
Meaning we have a contract of a hundred thousand dollars, let's say, with Northern Tree Service.
So they're on retainer?
They're on retainer, to a certain degree, but, you know, that contract is worth a hundred. We may only have expended forty thousand dollars out of that hundred. That sixty thousand dollars will be what was known as encumbered. And it'll be, you know, it's technically to be used by the end of the fiscal year.
If you look, drive around town, you can see they've been trimming trees like crazy the last few weeks.
And then if we only end up spending a hundred and ninety-one, the rest would be turned back to town.
Turned back to the town.
Okay. That's my question. Alex, you have one?
Yeah. So, the two-twenty-four, this is all expenses that we're paying other people to do. This is, this has nothing to do with us trimming trees?
This is contracted labor.
Okay, contract. So who decides what trees get trimmed and which trees get cut down?
Mike does. He's a tree warden.
Okay.
Then that actually was not, I don't, my question wasn't actually what I thought it was answered. This is, this is just pulling down trees. Our contractors don't plant trees, so there's really no line item for tree planting.
They may. They may.
Because I thought our guys are the only ones that planted trees.
I would think that, you know, our guys may not have the equipment to plant a larger tree, if there's one that was required for a larger tree somewhere. But, you know, that money is available for planting trees too. If Mike so used it to have tree planting done by a contractor, it would be an allowable expense in my mind under that line item.
Okay. So I guess my question is, how much is he budgeting for tree planting next year out of that? So I'll leave that question.
Just a follow-up, Marie. So I've noticed a lot of trees around town, they're just cutting off branches. I mean, is Mike involved in that, to that extent where he's going around that tree, branches, that tree, I mean, like, I'm just trying to understand sort of where the discretion of the contractor begins and ends.
Well, there's two things. There's the utility company that has their own tree contractor.
Right.
And they, and they have their own discretion to cut trees around their lines and Mike is not involved in that.
Okay.
And typically you'll see a minimalist approach to how they trim trees.
And what do you mean by that?
Meaning not, rather than go back all the way to the trunk to trunk branch, they just trim off the part that's near the wire.
Yeah, okay.
But in terms of pruning town trees that are in the right way, I mean, truthfully, the tree professionals know how to have the branches up to a certain level so they don't hit people in the head when they walk on a sidewalk, they can see dead branches. But if there's a tree that needs to come down, Mike would go look at the tree, take a picture of it and make a judgment.
Okay, about one coming down. But I guess what I'm asking is, like, you mentioned Northern Tree, I've seen them around. So, I mean, do they have a warrant to go around and, you know, cut branches down where they deem appropriate? You know, where you say, you know, it could hit somebody in the head or what? Or is Mike literally going around, that tree needs some branches cut, that one does that, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
I don't know if Mike is necessarily doing that. I don't think it's that little detail, but there are certain standards you have, the trees, again, like clearance heights and things like that. And I think they, I honestly have to go back and look at their contract to see what their scope of work includes in terms of what their judgment is.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, I mean, let's say Northern Tree, you know, is a little swamp. You know, is it within their discretion to say, you know what, we're gonna go to Long Meadow, we're gonna do some tree trimming? Because, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Is this sort of, how much of this can they initiate on their own?
I don't believe they would initiate much on their own. I mean, Mike may give them assignments saying, "I want this street trimmed," and then he may give them the discretion on that street of, you know, what limbs to take down. He may also point out, "This tree needs to, you know, really be trimmed," and, you know, it might give them some actual description. But I don't think they are allowed to come into town and saying, "Oh, we're slow somewhere else and we're just gonna come to Long Meadow."
Yeah.
Unless they already have a work order for a certain street or something to that nature. They can't arbitrarily come in and start cutting trees.
I mean, from a practical standpoint, if I hear what you're getting at, from a practical standpoint, the contract is a not-to-exceed number. And if they kind of unilaterally go through that amount, if they invoice for that amount well, that amount well before the end of the fiscal year, then obviously they won't be back as our tree contractor. So to some extent, the motivation for them to do the work only that needs to be done is to live according to the contract they signed so they can continue to have the contract.
And we also have the tree committee who's on top of what's being done around town in very...
And what do they do? I mean, I mean, what's, I mean, it sounds like there are two issues. Who decides when a tree is cut down entirely and who decides when to trim trees? I mean, and where does the tree committee come in on that?
Well, my understanding, the tree committee is on top of what's being done where in town and they help make recommendation. But Mike is a forest, what's he called?
Tree warden.
Tree warden, makes the final decision and sign off on everything.
Okay, I guess I didn't understand what you meant by they're on top of things. I mean...
They went out, they helped do the, there was a mapping done of town of what's going on. Post-storm, they've been out watching and mapping and seeing what's going on. So it's not, Northern Tree Service is not just doing what they want. There's a lot of eyes on it.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, and they're more general although, while we're on grounds, I just note that there's also an energy, excuse me, utilities line item that's in grounds and a few other things. And as I've gone through that, there's a personal protective equipment line item, there's that kind of stuff. And so I guess, do we have, and maybe a question for the select board, should we have a breakdown of the Department of Public Works that is what I'm gonna call a horizontal breakdown as well as those vertical breakdown? That is, right now we have a section for highways, we have a section for grounds, a section for buildings. But historically, we used to have a column that said Department of Public Works. And then to the right of that, there was, and here's the part of that that goes underground, and here's the part of that that was highway, and here's the part of that. So across, they all added up to the total. And you had last year's total and this year's total because, and please don't take this as an accusation, it's not. But the fact is that year to year changes between subgroups of the Department of Public Works makes it difficult for somebody like me to track what's true or not true change the entire Department of Public Works. In other words, just as we're seeing these shifts in salary allocate, or wage allocations this year, there's also shifts in utilities, there's shifts in protective gear, there's shift, you know. For us to come up with, how much money did we go from zero last year in protective gear to protective gear next year proposed? And I have a history of saying, "I'll buy any protective gear people think they need." So I'm picking that because it's not, shouldn't be controversial. There's protective gear falling in every department, and that makes it difficult for us to understand, for people to see how much the, because it's the same people. The people are interchangeable. There are very few people who don't flip-flop between grounds and highway, and between highway and sometimes even building maintenance.
With the protective gear, we'd have to look at it a little bit differently because the protective gear was actually, it's budgeted for in FY fourteen under other expenses. So what I'd have to do is in FY fourteen, in that particular case.
In that particular, that's right. And I probably shouldn't have used that one, Paul. I understand that.
Okay.
But even things like energy or electricity or something like that. And I'm not asking it, I'm questioning whether Richard, Alex, or Marie feel there's any value to looking at the Department of Public Works as a whole as well as its individual, you know, subsection breakdowns.
I'm confused.
So the lineup I would propose, Stephen, is a column that says from your point of view, you know...
Accounts.
Accounts. And here to be a column that says Department of Public Works. And that, just like we're doing for FTEs. And this would be Highway Department, the portion of that that goes to the Highway Department. And this would be Grounds, the portion of the first column that is in Grounds. Paul understands. So that if you add across the next five columns, you get the first column. So that we can see that, you know, how each line is distributed, how's the fuel distributed, how's the, you know, how's each one of these categories distributed? Repairs, how overtime is distributed, that kind of stuff. And it, you know, then if you have a two-year history of the entire department, or three-year history of the entire department, there's less discussions over shifts in between because those are somewhat arbitrary. And very honestly, even though we pass a budget as this, Mike and you have discretion to move that within the department. I mean, that's the one discretion we have. We pass a budget for the Department of Public Works. We don't pass a budget for a line item in Highway. So that's why I think it's important for us to understand how much money is in different places.
Well, I'm not sure so much breaking it up between, like you said, grounds, highway, that's artificial. Maybe having at the end of the day, what is the total electricity for DPW, total heating oil, total utility?
But that would be that. Because if you have the column down, if this said DPW, there'd be one line that said electricity and there'd be a big number there that would be split up between how much electricity went to highways, how much electricity went into buildings, how much went into water, how much went into sewer, how much went into grounds. But those were all that number. And you'd see that total number.
I can see the total number, but I'm not sure if I need the breakdown next to it.
So, Mark, are you just talking about sort of formatting this information in a different way?
I think it's a, it's almost a cross-reference formatting. I don't think, I don't think we want to do it...
Right, I mean, I guess what I'm wondering is, like, if we wanted to figure out how much total electric is in example?
Right.
I'm just trying to find one that's common to all three, right? So you could, so if we wanted to add up, we could do that here, it just is a little more difficult visually.
Correct.
Is that what you're...
Correct.
I mean, so you're not actually asking for actually more information, it's just a way of organizing and formatting the existing information.
But there are areas like, like training, you know, employee training, things that are common across the departments.
Right, no, and I get, I mean...
Yeah, so certain line items won't be captured.
Yeah.
No, they'll all be captured, just some won't be...
Zeros in certain departments.
Right, they'll have zeros in certain departments.
So you'd look at the director and you'd see X amount of dollars under Highway, X amount under grounds, X amount here, and then at the end you'd have a total.
Right.
Yeah. You know, I can ask the accounting office to do it tomorrow.
Oh, so that wouldn't be really labor intensive?
It's basically a spreadsheet.
Okay.
And I think it's asked for for FY fourteen and fifteen, just so you have a comparison of year to year.
Again, if other people think it's of value, I mean, I do.
If it's not gonna be really labor intensive.
I think once the initial spreadsheet is set up, it's just a matter of the input from fourteen numbers and fifteen numbers, so it's not...
I mean, you're just adding up the number.
Yeah, he's squishing that on one page.
We're just gonna put the, on one spreadsheet, you're gonna have all the Highway Department next to the Grounds Department, next to the town buildings. But for every like item, be it the director's salary, you'll have it broken down and then at the end you'll have a total.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on to building maintenance? No, you're still on grounds.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've not got to speak on grounds.
Oh, sorry.
I have, you know, I started and then everybody grabbed the mic and ran off in the other direction. This is, I guess this is a question kind of for us and Mark, well, Mark's part of us, but we talked about personal protective gear. Is there any alarm that we've gone from six thousand dollars last year to twenty-six thousand dollars this year for the same line item?
Well, I'll answer my part of it. I thought Stephen's explanation was meaning...
No, is there any alarm that we've gone from six thousand with no problems to twenty-six thousand to solve a problem that we don't know what, if there was ever a problem?
My short answer is no. I think personal protective equipment being...
Good, I don't need the long answer.
Personal, as opposed to group protective equipment, makes a lot of sense from my history.
Okay, well, that's good, but you're not concerned about that increase?
No, I'm not gonna argue with it.
Okay, good. So, wonder what this twenty thousand dollars is going for?
Which twenty?
The extra twenty over and above what we've been spending.
I think what happens, Richard, again, the line item was, the line item, other expenses was dissected into two. And the protective gear was always taken out of the other expenses prior to this budget presentation. So what you're gonna see is even though there is a twenty thousand dollar increase in the line item for protective gear, there's gonna be a drop in the other expense line because that's where it came from.
Then you can't, honestly, you can't tell us what we spent on PPE last year?
No, I, we can, we would just have to go back and pull it out of the fourteen or the thirteen numbers and start plugging it in. It's not shown here in that fashion. We'd have to go, we'd have to go back and reallocate those monies.
Because, you know, I can guarantee you for anybody that's in risk management, there would have to be something raised that's had pretty heavy to warrant this type of increase in a program. There'd have to be something fairly significant, because this is a three or four hundred percent increase in a program.
It's showing here, on other expenses under Highway, it's thirty-seven thousand, five hundred went down to twenty-one thousand. So that's other expenses and that's what you're talking about.
Right.
So we might not have seen a huge jump. We just are seeing it actually better...
You're seeing it broken down into different categories.
It's more transparent now.
I'm going with the figures that are presented in the package, and FY thirteen was spread across the board, it was nineteen-hundred, ninety-five dollars and ninety-seven cents in many different areas. It adds up to less than six thousand dollars for PPE. That's all. I'm just taking the sheets that are presented, Marie.
Right, so the question you have is how much was spent on personal protective gear in FY14?
I'm seeing that it's less than $6,000 and we're requesting this year $26,000. Just a point, I'm concerned about it.
Okay, so could you find out how much we did spend?
No, I don't need to know how much you spent.
Oh, you don't?
I'll trust the figures here is what we spent.
Okay, because what he's saying is it's in other expenses also.
Well, it's either I can trust these figures in front of me or I can't. I guess that's what I'm talking about. This is given to me to study as a budget.
I just want, Richard, I think we have to trust these figures, A.
That's you, I don't have to trust the figures.
That's fine. I, if we don't trust the figures, then we got problems. The difference being that, you know, when we have a quote-unquote, pardon the expression, catch-all category that says other, okay? That means that, you know, anything that they can't classify through a budgeted line item may get put there. That doesn't mean that they don't know what it is.
PPE is not a miscellaneous budget item.
But it was several years ago. Unfortunately, we didn't have a line item breakout. That's why it chose the zeros. So that's the problem. It was not a budgeted line item. Paul, is that correct?
Correct.
So if it wasn't a budgeted line item-
Well, then why do you even have a number then, then, Mark? They've got a number stating that this is an expenditure.
What they should have put is a dash or an NA.
They should have put nothing.
Right.
Said zero, we had it in the other funds.
Right.
Okay.
It should have had, PPE, things that didn't exist in 11 and 12, 13 and 14, shouldn't be a zero. It should be an NA perhaps.
And you know, Mark, in any organization, the size of that, if you're not tracking this silly stuff like PPE, it's insane.
I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just telling you what I perceive is happening.
Nothing more for OSHA reporting and being able to defend your position.
I mean, you know, at what level do you track to? I think PPE is important to track, but the fact is, it wasn't, you know, and more importantly, I think if we had, and I'm speaking out of turn here for Paul Festerzic, with additional resources, we'd go back like anybody else does. And we can restate prior years by pulling out the PPE, because I'm sure the records exist. But do we really want to spend our resources restating prior years like that?
No, I'd rather go to the maintenance manager's system, press two buttons and get the figure.
Yeah.
But it's not going to be in there because we didn't have the system then.
And I think we're starting to become, this year, hopefully, we're moving towards more of an efficient reporting system than we've had in the past. So I'm glad to see other expenses is coming down and we're seeing the breakout. Because personal protective gear under ground maintenance is $1,995.97 in 2013 expended. And that exact same amount is expended under Highway. And so I'm glad to see, I think it's, we're moving towards a more efficient system.
And we got it under building maintenance, we got $6,500. That's my whole point. We've got it in a lot of different places.
So it's, I'm glad to see we're breaking this up a little bit more and getting rid of these catchalls, which are inefficient.
I also think, in addition to the more discernible expenditure in future budgets, I think the positive, the real positive story to me is that this change, this move from having it be from lumped into other expenses where you ordered a bunch of earplugs and a bunch of work gloves and a bunch of other stuff that is typically associated with PPE, this change to ordering equipment specific to each man that they are now issued, that is their gear, is an approach that I think will work better for the department. And it was the result of, and this is something you've talked to me about a lot, Richard, that I think is valuable, labor and management working together to decide how can we make the department safer? And is a professional development exercise, quite frankly. And so to me, yes, the budgetary part of it is good, that we'll be able to see how much we're spending on equipment. But the fact that it's the result of a positive step for the department that was collaborative, to me, is the real victory.
Well, I'm glad to hear about the Safety Committee especially. I think that's a huge step forward. Any other questions on ground maintenance? Okay, how about?
Well, I guess, I guess the overtime is going up substantially for grounds maintenance. And I'm just wondering what the rationale was for that maintenance overtime increase?
For grounds?
Yeah, especially since you put in-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's town buildings, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, grounds?
I jumped there.
Correct, grounds is a level.
Yep, grounds is a level.
Okay, so-
I believe, and I can certainly ask, but my belief is that it's the additional maintenance demands of the new high school.
Where are we?
We are now building maintenance.
Building maintenance?
Uh, overtime. Maintenance overtime, it's the Personnel Service.
We had a school there before and there was a lot of snow removal.
No, but this is filter repla, I mean-
No, he said, he said, yes, this is snow overtime.
No, I'm doing maintenance overtime.
We're just straight overtime. Well, why would you need overtime?
I don't know, that was my next question. Why are we doing it on overtime rather than doing it on straight time? I guess it's the next question.
Are they going to say because it's like boring spending late nights?
Mark, I'd be more concerned about the overtime snow for the schools. It went from $5,000 in FY12 and now it's rocking in at $18,725.
Well, it expanded in 2013, eighteen-
Buildings.
Buildings. Snow right underneath the maintenance.
Yeah, right, right under, right under the maintenance overtime.
Oh, snow, right.
How much snow did we get in FY12?
Pretty significant.
We had a warm winter before we had a bad winter.
The way to tell is to go back to our Highway Department budget, which I had looked at. And the Highway Department budget was very low in plowing then.
Yeah, because I remember wondering why we had-
In FY12, snow and ice removal for the Highway Department was $68,000. The year before it'd been $242,000 and the year after it's $167,000. So FY12 was the year it never snowed.
A light year.
Well, FY12 here on the highway breakout that I'm looking at shows overtime almost flatlined for Highway Department.
He's talking about snow overtime. Or snow and ice removal, the snow and ice removal budget.
Okay, it wasn't, it wasn't under the ice.
I'm comparing Highway Department's snow and ice removal trend with town building maintenance, snow, overtime, schools.
Mark, where are you?
I'm not even in your, in your document.
He's not even in our.
The copy of that document I got doesn't print.
If it's not in here, then where is the data?
Wait a minute, but you're saying there's a snow and ice removal line item under Highway?
Yes.
Okay.
Not under printout, I have.
I have snow and ice removal, $242,000, right, under total Highway.
Yes, at the very bottom, yeah.
At the very bottom, okay.
$242, 68.
Down there, yeah.
$167,5, right? See that?
Yeah.
So, and that doesn't mean anything other than FY12 seemed to be a pretty light year for snow. And I seem to recall it was. So the question that we had was why is the snow overtime for schools the way it is? And I'm saying it just follows the same trend as it did for-
They are non-compatible, Mark.
No, but if a light snow year-
No, I'm sorry, they do not mesh. One is sidewalk maintenance. You always clear your sidewalks after completion of a storm. A plowing event takes place during the entire event. You don't clean sidewalks up until it's over.
No, the grounds division plows. They plow the parking lots at all the schools. They, that have to be opened right away. They plow Town Hall and the Fire Department. They plow, I'm sorry, not grounds, buildings.
It's not under word with saying that. This is schools. This is schools we're talking about.
Yeah, it says snow overtime schools. Should have said schools and town buildings. Is that exactly?
Well, either way, I mean, they do more than just sidewalks. I mean, the people who, the people who plow the schools.
Wait a minute, Stephen, it's gone from 5,600 to $18,000 in schools showing a school, snow, overtime, schools.
I see that. I'm looking right at that line item, snow OT schools.
You have maintenance OT, which is its own.
See, but, see, Richard, in your document, what you don't see is FY11. In FY11, that number was $16,040. So it was $16,000 in FY11. In FY12, it did go to $5,687. In FY13, it was back up to $18,000. I guess that's, you weren't looking, so I apologize. I thought you saw that FY11 trend, which is what I had been trying to refer to. In FY11, the numbers were also high. So FY12 appears to be a down year for snow removal expenses throughout the town. And that's why, when I was referring to the overall snow and ice removal, that where there's a, for highways, where it's 67, 822 in FY12, you can't see the FY11 where it was $242,000. And that's why I don't like the document you're working on.
Okay, yeah, because we're going to be asking questions based on the document presented. I'm not going to have six spreadsheets.
But this was sent to us also.
I know, but I'm not going to go back and forth between two or three different spreadsheets. This is identical to this one, Mark, except this one's got FY11.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the only difference in these.
And that helps in a lot of cases.
It only, it only helps if you want to go FY11. I want to go back to FY5, you know?
But this one also has percentages of increases and yours doesn't?
All right, that's right. Any other questions on building maintenance?
Actually, I have a question on this. The snow OT schools, what is that? I mean, is that expenses for our own people doing the work or is it for contractors?
No, we do the work in-house.
Okay, so-
And that really should be schools and town buildings.
I don't think we have a single snow plow contractor, do we? No, I think we do all snow removal in-house. Maybe, I don't think we haul snow.
All right, sure, let's talk to them.
He said includes Town Hall.
The grounds department, I think, may do Town Hall, but certainly the school buildings.
And they do Community House?
What's that?
Community House, those little part of town.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think the school department does the school buildings and the parking lots at the schools and things like that. So it is more than just sidewalks after storms.
Right, they do the schools. And also, also your DPW will come in on some of the bigger lots too.
Possibly so, but I do believe that the school guy, the school maintenance crew does the plowing for the lots and everything else.
Okay, so here's my question though. Because we were referring to snow and ice under Highway. And that's, that's an expense item, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so what kind of expenses are we incurring if our own people are doing the work?
Overtime, like wages.
Okay, so snow and ice, when you say snow and ice at the bottom of 118,
Yes.
That means overtime.
And it also means salt and sand, things of that nature, fixing the plows, buying-
Wait a minute.
On the bottom of 118?
Yeah, so snow and ice where it's bolded. And it says $100,000. Is that expenses or is that salary or both?
Both, it's both. Salt, the brine stuff, they used to activate the salt. I don't know if they assess fuel during snow events or is fuel just the overall cost?
Yeah, they'll get assessed for the usage during the snow removal.
Yeah.
And so higher up on Highway where it says overtime, where it says 33.5, that's a labor expense, right? And does that, is that separate from snow overtime?
Yes.
So snow and, I mean, that's a little, because the way I've been reading this is that the top part are labor expenses and the bottom part are out-of-pocket expenses, okay.
The difference, Alex, is that state law allows us to expend over our budget for snow and ice removal. And it was one of the very few line items that you can do that for. And so the, it's, everything's in there and allocated in there and-
And that's why it's below the total Highway.
That's right, it's probably everything from sand and salt to overtime to-
Gloves.
So going back to the, all right, so going back to the snow OT schools, I get how snow, that's variable, you can't plan on it. The maintenance OT, that, I don't know, I think you were talking about that, Richard. Why isn't that predictable? And why isn't that part of the regular work week?
You may have a boiler that goes down, as an example, that they have to come in. Or you may have a pipe that bursts, things of that nature. So, and that's what those are for.
Those are for emergencies.
Correct.
But yet it's budgeted to go up 23.3%, so.
What was expended in 2014?
I mean, I think there's going to be substantially more maintenance demands on the overall buildings crew, driven in large part by the new high school. And so to some extent, there is some overtime built in. Because some overtime is still cheaper than adding a full-time employee. And so you build in some overtime for, if there's an event here that needs to be set up or cleaned up after. If there's a bathroom that has an issue or, you know, mopping, you build it in because there are circumstances that come up during the year. When you look at the overall maintenance responsibility, the new high school substantially increases that, but we're not increasing our staff.
Why, you know, we've talked a lot about this, but, I mean, sort of, this is a general question. I mean, we have a new building. And I thought part of the pitch for the new high school was that it would be easier to maintain and that, you know, I mean, which made sense to me. You know, you've got this aging building, you know, and I mean-
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess that's my general question.
But line and sink around.
Yeah, in some ways, it's easier to maintain in that, like, for example, there's a building maintenance system, a computer thing you can actually log on from your home. It tells you what's happening with every system in the building. So you're not walking around the building trying to figure out where the smoke alarm is that's chirping or, you know, where the thing, the sensor is or whatever.
Right, right.
You can just do that. So in some ways, it makes it easier. But the breadth of responsibilities in a building that is a technologically advanced building is much greater. It's, I think it's, you know, the landscaping responsibilities alone, and we've contracted some of that out, but not 100%, are much greater. They've added fields. And I know that's the grounds department, but there's a lot more scope of work, if you will. Even if attacking that scope of work is easier because of some of the things that have been built into the building, there's still just a lot more to be done on an ongoing basis. And we're not proposing expanding, adding another maintenance staff person. Because that would obviously be substantially more-
For the school.
For the entire team.
Right, right.
That would obviously be, a new FTE would obviously be more than the $1,630 we're proposing for increased overtime.
Sure, sure.
$5,200 was the answer to your question, Marie. What's been expended in that maintenance overtime account through February of this fiscal year?
Oh, so far, but we haven't finished the year.
We haven't finished the year, it's 52 out of the seven.
So Alex, the other answer, sarcastic answer is, you didn't do maintenance in the old high school. It's about time we started to do something here. And I say that cautiously because we did do maintenance in the old high school. But the point is that we're going to be a whole lot more diligent about doing all the preventive ma- you know, the other high school didn't get preventive maintenance, other than critical preventive maintenance. This thing's got all these new things that, you know, it's like buying a new car and deciding, yeah, I'm going to rotate the tires and I'm going to, you know, change, not just change the oil, but, you know, change the windshield wipers and the transmissions, all this stuff that nobody really does.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I mean, you're not going to spend money here-
And that's the budget. Now, the question is, how much will we really do?
We'll find out.
Just to illustrate the point, a small bit, then we can move on. Maintenance can sometimes include carpet or tile, you know, ceiling tile replacement. You know, and not in OT, but in the overall budget. We're not going to have to do that here for a very long time. But that's, I mean, that's the type of thing, like materials and things like that, you don't need to spend upfront.
But this maintenance overtime, you're saying it is for true emergencies?
I would say by and large, yes, but there are, it is possible that, because we are not adding additional staff and there are a lot, there is a lot more to be done, that some of it may be work that, there may need to be overtime incurred to just, to do, like, if, because it's workday. So the custodian is here right now. If he's doing his regular cleaning and nothing happens, that's fine. But if something happens, the toilet overflows or something, he has to stop what he's doing, go take care of that. If he stays longer to then finish his regular route, then, you know, the work may not be emergency per se, but, you know.
Is, well, actually, let me follow up on that. Is that how overtime is authorized?
It's by the work week.
No, I get that, but, I mean, where I come from, you know, you need a supervisor to specifically authorize overtime. Is, what system do we have?
I believe that the division heads can authorize overtime.
But I mean, but is it can authorize, but is it required for them to authorize it? Or can somebody just work late?
Hourly employees, if they are here and they're working, they get paid for the time they're here.
What's that?
Hourly employees, which are most of our collective bargaining, our present employees, if they're here, they're working, they're on the clock. And they swipe in and out.
Right.
Exempt employees can work late with, they're paid for their output and not their time.
But for an hourly employee though, it would have to be authorized. They can't arbitrarily stay late to get extra money.
Okay.
Right, right, right.
And for the DPW, who would be the person who decides that authorization?
In this particular case where it's maintenance overtime, it's either going to be Adrian Fanov or I don't know if he puts it down to his head custodian, but it's going to be one of those two.
Okay.
Yeah, Alex, the other thing is, the old high school was a, was a steam heated building that had a boiler and water went around. This high school is heated by forced air. So this high school, for example, and this is one of the things we're finding out, has a lot of air handlers, which is fans, fancy word for fans. And every one of those has lots and lots of filters. And what we found is, and hopefully it was an anomaly because there was construction going on, those filters were plugging up or filling up very, very frequently. And it's a high labor intensive, you know, it's-
To be able to get up there.
To get up there, to disassemble whatever it is.
Right.
To get up there, to disassemble whatever it is. And that's a lot of the added maintenance for this building. Now, the question is, now that we don't have construction going on with dust and dirt and stuff going on there, are the filters gonna last their expected lifetime? But we were being told at the building, school building committee, that they're changing those filters on a monthly basis that were, that the contractor said, oh, you should change them twice a year. And so, that's part of.
But there are pre-filters, and then there are others, so there's like multiple sets of.
Yeah, but, but that's an example of something that takes labor in this building that we spent no labor on in the other building. And there are other things like that. And I mentioned, though, the air filters, because A, it's a, it's a health and safety kind of thing. People notice when the, when the air starts getting dusty, and it's extraordinarily labor-intensive to change those things. I mean, it's not like somebody comes down here and in fifteen minutes changes the filters. It's a, it's an all-day event to change just a couple of them, so.
Wow.
I think that's part of what we found, you know, that's, that's the concept of the heating system, and that's just one part of it.
And another occasional use of overtime is if someone calls in sick, and their work has to be covered.
Yeah, but that, but that, that should be steady year to year. The increase that's due to this building is due to my understanding of these enhanced systems demands for maintenance.
Yeah, a lot more work to be done here.
And hopefully, we're just covering more than we really need to, and this will drop next year.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is to spend far less than you budget.
Yeah. Anything else on building maintenance and other questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a general question I had before. I noticed it looks like we're only outlining about nineteen hundred and fourteen dollars for training, as far as I can see, for the entire division.
The entire division of building maintenance?
Yeah, public works.
Do you, do you think that's because they've been training on this new building, or?
No, I'm talking about the entire division.
Oh, the entire division?
Yeah. I'm only seeing two training entries unless I missed one, and that's, that's not much training for a workforce this size. I would, I would estimate that item, what?
I can get details on what kind of trainings they're doing.
Now, they just had a training, I was reading about in your weekly report. Are some of those trainings free that the Commonwealth gives out? And it's, because I know.
Yeah, I mean, especially, safety trainings are free. Many of them are free. Maya, I think, is offering free trainings. The trainings on these buildings were largely free. They were done by Gilbane or the subs. But I can look into that, Richard. You know, I think, I think they do have a pretty good training program, so I don't think the budget's reflective of that. Because like I said, I think there are a lot of free trainings they go to, but I can certainly look into that.
I had another, I had another question, too.
Wait, I wanna stick to the training. Can I just jump off here?
Oh, sure, you can.
Thank you. Should we be looking to put a little bit more, so there's training when you bring in this new asset management computer program, or is that gonna be under the IT budget, the training for that?
It would be under the budget to purchase the software, the training comes with it.
It does come with it. Okay, so there'll be enough to train everybody on it, because I feel that's gonna be a big leap forward. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Richard.
Okay. Paul, you can likely answer this. Employee incentive programs, awards, recognition, is that just grouped under personnel services? There's no line item for that?
There's no line item, and there's very minimal recognition in any department, almost. You know, the formal recognition.
Right.
Whether it's, you know, the five-year PIN or ten-year PIN, we don't just have those programs in place right now.
Yeah. We don't have anything, do we?
We have a good old.
And pizzas every now and then.
We have the occasional pizzas. We have the, no, I mean.
No employee of the month.
No.
Well, I guess, I guess what I come at, Stephen, is you sit there so elegantly and defend your staff, and then we come around to, you know, evidence that it should be rectified, and I'm not blaming you, but I'm just saying, there's, I would expect a line item in here that does something, that we at least consciously say, we are going to attempt to find good behavior in our workforce and reward it each year with something simple. It can be twenty-five dollars, it can be, it can be small things.
Collective bargaining, we asked that two years ago, and the answer was, collective bargaining doesn't allow you to do some of that stuff.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Richard.
Well, talk to you later, but collective bargaining doesn't allow you to do that.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I.
Couldn't even give out movie passes.
You can't give awards?
Correct.
To anyone?
You can't give out things.
Well, you can recognize, you can't give gifts.
Right, you could recognize them with small tokens, but.
You know, I hear what you're saying, and in theory, it'd be great to have that. In practice, it's been my experience, that a sincere appreciation of the work they do and acknowledgement of specific things, like not, hey, great job, but hey, the way you reconstructed that item was really good, goes a lot further than, than that. And it creates less of a competitive environment.
You know, I'm not agreeing with anything you say, because it doesn't fit any, it's not in any motivational module that I've ever experienced or taught myself. It's just not there. Awards are different from every individual. You're right, some people take a slap on the back, and the other one takes a hot fifty-dollar bill in their hand, because you have to meet the need of the employee at that given time. But not to have any program, or to have one program that fits all is wrong. A slap on the back does not meet the needs of a workforce as big as this one is.
Well, I guess I don't know what's more counterintuitive, that I elegantly defend the department but don't have a rewards program, or that the department gets their teamie torn apart, and we're asking for a line item for a rewards program.
I think, I think you have to have a recognition program. We're talking about budget items here and debating these. We're not debating the merits of a workforce and the drive of individual employees, which I firmly believe should be isolated and given credit for. I, yeah, I've talked to you before on this, and I would, I would hope this next year we would see some movement forward for the PIN, an employee PIN award thing. I mean, what's wrong with giving an employee a PIN for being here for five years, or ten years, and fifteen years, and twenty years? And these type of things, these are, these are plaques-and-snap type things. They're very simple to do, they mean a lot to employees. You know, employees can take a lot of pride.
I'll give it some thought.
And they don't cost as much.
I understand that. I'll give it some thought.
Yeah.
Now, we, that's something we can, you know, put on an agenda, look at in the next few years.
I just think town managers needs to do it.
I think there's probably money in the select board budget.
Right. Well, I hear you. It's within the town manager's discretion to do it, and I will, and we can certainly talk about that more, but I will, I do think about better ways to express appreciation for the work. In actually having these conversations within this actual organization, I have found that the feedback I'm getting is, it's really not that, as great a fit as I think it would seem in principle.
I'm sorry, what is a fit? I lost you.
Like an employee recognition, you know, a little bonus program. I've talked to departments about that, and I don't know that it's necessarily a fit for how the organizations function, how this organization functions versus like, if we were looking at one hypothetically. And I have, because I did take your words to heart, Richard, and I did spend some time working on it. I don't know if it's as, if it's, like I said, I don't know if it's as good a fit, or if I've been just not looking at the right models, but I will continue to do that.
Yeah, because there are different models. Why don't we consider that down the line?
Different models.
Yeah, well, there's different ways of doing it, from pins to.
That's not a different model. Okay, so.
We'll bring that up. I will have that down.
I know, but try and stop me from talking, please. I'm trying, I'm trying to say, and I don't know if there's agreement on the board, I think, and you may have it all covered, I would like to make sure that there's training opportunities being made to the staff. And I think I'd like to make sure that it's more than two thousand dollars for as many staff as we have involved in critical trades.
I will get you information on our training program, and then we should make that judgment.
But maybe it's all free, and you may be way, way beyond covered where it's looking like, but looking at the budget, it looks like training is really being minimized.
So, we'll consider that as one of the things on deliberating on Thursday.
Okay, you can talk me down.
I wrote it down.
You can move on now.
Anything else under building maintenance?
No.
Okay. He's gonna get me over. Okay, so, anything general on the DPW?
No, no, I just wanted, yeah, but, my understanding is that we've been, we had been having some issues this year with outside janitorial services at some of our buildings, and that was a change a few years ago from internal janitors to going outside. Is there any consideration for flip-flopping and going back to internal staffing?
No, I, we have had issues with our, with our, we just changed contractors. I think the savings, the savings year to year, in terms of operational, are decent with the contractor, the level of service, I'm not willing to swear by, because we have had issues. I think we have straightened them out with the contractor, things have improved, but, you know, we talk a lot about OPEB, and you, having a contracted service like that is one way to minimize OPEB liability versus a full-time employee.
But if you can't get in our buildings because they haven't been, you know, whether it's waste baskets haven't been cleaned, or floors haven't been mopped, or bathrooms haven't been cleaned in four days, I think that's pretty serious stuff.
I think we are, I think we're by the worst of that, and we are monitoring carefully.
That's fine, I actually, you know, I'm not.
And we've been it out every year to see if we can finally find the right fit for us.
But I guess my point would be is, is, that was a, that was a recent change that wasn't universally accepted by everybody on the select board at that time. We have essentially a reconstituted select board, certainly a majority, and if, and I would say if it's the opinion of our professionals who are doing this, that it's not serving our purposes anymore, we should feel comfortable making that recommendation. On the other hand, if you feel it's serving our purposes, we are saving OPEB.
When we, again, that's another one that I drilled down into with Mike, and the contractor, quite frankly, when it appeared that we weren't getting as good a service as we should have been. As we sit here today, I still think the contracted service is a more fiscally favorable alternative, and it's just on us to manage the contractor effectively to get the level of service we want.
Any other questions on DPW in general? Okay, moving on to parks and rec.
Yeah, what we have to do about daycare and, and does the budget reflect where you really wanna be, or where you're gonna end up being, given the fact that we have no clue how many people are actually gonna sign up for daycare next year? And are we making, our school committee, are we making commitments to individuals to work there without having the enrollment to support those individuals?
The budget does reflect a reduction in staff based on a reduction in enrollment. Does the budget reflect the no full-day kindergarten? This one, this one may not.
So, you're saying there might be further decreases?
We, yeah, we can monitor it. I'd actually have to look, I don't recall.
We, I've initiated that process with Barry Jarvis, and one of the areas is the half-day kindergarten that is offered by Greenwood. And to some extent, I, we don't know the outcome of the full-day kindergarten for the school district discussion. So, if full-day kindergarten does go forward, depending on the funding model, we would probably stop offering the half-day kindergarten at Greenwood. That's, we've done that analysis. We certainly are always looking at the daycare and the enrollment, so, I don't know if I answered your question.
Yes.
He doesn't know either.
No.
He was talking to Paul.
I heard.
Has there been an analysis done of the whole operation at the Greenwood, because over the years, the budget's been so, has changed dramatically with, especially demographically, you know, school enrollment's going down. Is it really a service that we should be offering with all of the private daycares in the area? And I know the parking rec director would kill me for asking that question, because I know they profit from that, and my question is, what's the rate of profitability? When I was on the finance committee, we were told this is gonna be a big revenue producer for the town, and it was for a while, it was significant. But have we looked at it and seen if it's worth it for the, when you start adding in, like, OPEB and all that other stuff to it?
On a monthly basis, she gives, she gives it to the town manager and myself, the financials that come from the revolving fund, because that's where all this is really coming out of. You're right, that the profitability, if you wanna call it that, the difference between the expenses and the revenues has dropped over the years, but if I recall correctly, there's still a positive, it's still making money to offset the cost of some of her other programs, basically, but that has diminished quite dramatically.
It's not as good a deal as it once was, and we have had that conversation. My, and looking at, and as I've been here, it certainly appears that the trends are such that we may not be in a daycare business in the coming years, but because that's a change, it needs to be made with plenty of notice, so parents can make, you know, can make other arrangements, and they don't run into, you know, lack of vacancy at other daycare programs. We wanna be cautious in our approach, because I don't, it doesn't create, it doesn't create a stress for the general fund, because it is mostly out of the revolving fund.
Right.
Right, and out of the, another revolving fund piece for the employee health insurance and so forth, is OPEB covered for that as well? Have we ever assessed that, or? I know we don't do it to any other department, so.
Actually, a few years back, when we did an allocation, we actually took it out of a number of different funds, and I do believe that the parks and rec were assessed their small portion of the OPEB that one time, as was the water and sewer, as was the ambulance. So, the next time that we do, I mean, I know right now we only have the general fund amount in there, but if we did, let's say in the fall, if we have a large amount of free cash, and that, you know, I'll probably, because we're gonna have a large amount of free cash with a balanced budget, I will probably have an additional request to go into OPEB. I will break it down by funding source. But again, their portion is going to be small, it's gonna be a couple thousand dollars at best, but I will do that. So, yes, we have, it's only been done once in the past, though, Paul, if I can recall correctly.
We're also looking at the business model, too. And this is part of the initiative for the programming, that we talk to schools and the library about, and the council on aging, and try and get a sense of who's offering what programs, so there's not competition and duplication. Because we don't wanna alarm families that have their children in daycare at Greenwood or people who work at Greenwood, you know, we are looking at it, it's possible, except the business model is just not, hasn't changed to reflect the growth in daycare options and the growth in programming options, but we are looking at it.
Go ahead, Alex.
On the FTs, on page one twenty-nine, it says there's a kindergarten coordinator?
Greenwood Center.
No, I understand that, but what are they, I mean, is that another word for kindergarten teacher, or is that, or what, what is it they're coordinating?
We do have a half-day kindergarten program.
I understand.
And I believe they, I believe they coordinate the program. I don't know if it's a teacher, or, I mean, I don't.
I'm sure that they, they have a curriculum that they, they go through, that person's responsible for, and whether you call him a teacher or coordinator, I'm not sure if that makes much of a difference from what they're really doing.
I can get you some information on what that.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, Marie, that actually goes back, and I can't compile it up. I, I looked at the utilities listed back in the, and I would imagine it was DPW only, and I ran FY-12, FY-14, actually FY-15 on electric in a broad category, it was called utilities, oil, and I may have even thrown the streetlights in there, too. And overall, from FY-12 to FY-15, they've increased by seventy-seven percent. And I don't know if you've looked at that, Paul, or if anybody's looked at that, and each one, there's a twenty-three percent increase in fuel oil only. And some of the other utilities, whatever's under utilities, went from one ninety-six to two fifty-two in fourteen, up to two sixty-one now. Electricity actually went down, it went from twenty-one thousand down to sixteen, but overall, there was a seventy-seven percent increase in those four utility classes from FY-12 to FY-15.
Is that strictly the general fund budgets that you're looking at? Did you include the water and sewer? Because I'm, I'm gonna, I, that's why if we do this thing that Mark had said, I'm just making an assumption without looking at the numbers, that if we included the water and sewer, the outcome might be somewhat different.
Right, I don't think I had the water and sewer, I think it was just DPW only, if I'm not mistaken, because I'm looking back in the book. And maybe we'll, maybe I'll double-check myself and find out what figures I have down.
Yeah, okay, but like I said, we'll also be doing those spreadsheets for tomorrow night's, so we'll basically have that electrical line item, and all of them going across through the whole DPW.
But it was a pretty significant increase from, for that many years, in those, in all those cumulative categories. I think the fuel-oil one is what surprised me, went from two forty-five, and now you're coming in at three twelve. I don't think fuel-oil prices have increased that much since FY-12, so I would assume that most of that is increased usage, and we're tuning up sixty thousand, seventy thousand gallons. If the, if the figures are accurate, okay, that's, it's all based on the accuracy of the figures.
Go ahead, I think the only other thing that I can think of is if they topped off the, depending on the price, if they topped off the fuel tanks at year-end.
That can do it? Yeah, it can be a pretty significant difference, too, topping off the end. Okay.
Any other questions on parks and rec?
Yeah, I, that was on utilities, I just had some questions. You know, I noticed that the school flyer distribution, seventy percent electric and all that, and, but it looks like we're still, you know, I question why not a hundred percent, of course. And we look at the mailings that are going out, have we ever revisited all these mailings to see if they're still applicable? I mean, I get a lot of mailings at my house, I just don't need.
What line?
It's in their, in their budget, it's in their narrative.
Oh, in the narrative.
The parks and rec.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that's out of the revolving fund.
Okay.
Well, it's worth, Richard, they are, they are doing the brochures in-house now, saving some money differently.
I was, I was looking at the direct. I was looking at the direct.
I think that was in one of the monthly reports.
Yeah, I guess I was looking at the direct mailings and all that I saw in there. I was wondering.
Well, I mean, the revolving fund is funded by the fees we collect for programs and daycare and things like that. So it is a business function of the town, and we use the mailings to market those business functions and to attract people to them to increase revenue for the revolving fund.
Okay, well, I can tell you, I don't need them.
But they're a program offering for everyone, not just children.
No, I understand. I understand. But we're sending them to every resident?
I believe so, yeah.
Some of their brochures, I believe, go to every resident, the spring or fall, summer brochures. And those are the ones you're probably referring to, the eight and a half by 11 booklets.
Yeah, because you know, we've got online, you know, my fear is, and you know as well as it happens, likely 80% of that stuff goes right straight to the trash.
I'd have to ask Barry, but I.
No, she, Barry wouldn't know. I'm talking about when it gets to the homes, when it goes, you know, a lot of it goes from the mailman's hand right into the recycle bin.
But at least at that point, the person has put their hand on it and seen that there is a brochure for the Parks Department. If someone doesn't go seek out the link online, they will never find it.
On 2014 goals, it said 70% electronic for school flyer distribution, so maybe, I know I have mentioned, don't send me another brochure, and I called up Parks and Rec on that, so maybe there will be increase.
It's gone 70%. That's just the distribution fund. Of course, I had a question on why not 30. Anyway, it's just a point. I mean, I look at the mail that you get, Stephen, everybody gets it. You get junk mail by the group and it's nestled in with the others and it just, you know, is there any, has there been any type of background? Does anybody do any surveys to check with people and say, hey, do you need these brochures coming? Is there anything effort that you're aware of that kind of does a check back against?
It's not that I'm aware of, and I guess I wouldn't refer to our Parks and Rec brochure as junk mail.
Well, I think it's worth checking with the director to tell her, ask her if, are they doing anything to decrease the hard copies and going straight to electronic?
It comes nestled in with junk mail. I didn't say it was junk mail.
I misunderstood.
Okay, yes, you did misunderstand.
I misunderstood myself, I'm sorry.
And arbitrarily, a lot of this junk mail is grouped together. People don't filter through it anymore. I mean, if it's anything like, I could use my house as a reference. I get about one letter a week and the rest of it is solid junk mail that I don't need solicitation for. I think we've even had complaints on, Paul started them on dropping stuff in his driveway, you know? Okay.
So.
The brochure is beautiful, by the way.
You'll get back to us on that. Any, are we ready for the?
So, what was the specific question?
If Barry is doing anything to decrease the direct mailings to residents.
Okay.
I mean, could I make a comment on that?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it strikes me that that's a situation where, I mean, it's being paid for out of this revolving fund. So if it's not paying for itself, I don't know, it seems like that's an aspect of town government that's being run as a business, you know? So there's sort of that internal discipline that exists that probably doesn't exist for other areas, you know? And it sounds like Barry's got to make a judgment about whether the cost of it brings in enough new revenue to justify it. I mean, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see us sort of pushing her or the Park Rec to get away from it if she thinks it's working.
If I could paraphrase you, we should micromanage Barry's control over, over the use of direct mailings.
No, wait a minute, gentlemen. This was a question, okay? I didn't micromanage anything.
No, I'm just saying.
It was a basic question. Have we considered only, just like any question that you'd asked, Mark, about distribution of mail, direct mailings, have we considered, that's not micromanaging. If it's put here for us to read, I've read, I asked a question on it.
That's fine.
Okay, well.
You're allowed to.
Okay, we don't need to micromanage it. Just because I ask a question does not mean I'm micromanaging anything.
And I didn't say you were.
You did too. You just said it's not a position to micromanage.
So you'll get back to us on what Parks and Rec is doing? Oh, Paul?
I have a question, yeah. No, you can finish what you were saying. I just have another question.
Oh, I was just, no, I was going to, did you have anything on Parks and Rec?
Yeah. You know, I think there's a couple of things that I want to say that, you know, it's not necessarily micromanaging, but when you look at programs, you know, programs are added, sometimes programs are deleted, but a lot of times programs aren't deleted. And I think you have a right to question, what are the ancillary costs of having something? You know, for example, when we would take money in for a program, that's soccer field, soccer camp, that money goes into the revolving fund. It's used to pay for the camp counselors or whatever, and then there's a profit and it's distributed. One of the things that we don't do and never have done is said, look, there's field maintenance that needs to go on with it, or you're renting the pool at the high school and the, and the school keeps the revenue from the pool and goes into their, into their budget, but we don't keep the money for the upkeep. And I think one of the things that we need to do is start looking at the usage of the buildings and the usage of the fields, because we've taken Williams Middle School Field, for example, and there, and I don't know if it's still there, but there was an all-day soccer camp there that you would go to for a week at a time. And that soccer program with kids wearing cleats are going to tear up a field that wasn't meant to be torn up in the offseason, the rest period. We offer lacrosse, field hockey camps on Russell Fields. At the time, we're probably supposed to be resting them after the high school seasons. And that money goes into revolving fund, never to see the light of day when it comes to field maintenance, building maintenance and so forth. And I think it's something that we should explore to find out if, or to start looking at that fees generated by rental of, for example, we're renting out this building here at the high school, in my opinion, at an alarming rate, which is good for the community in a way, but it's also bad for the community because it's tax dollars that will pay for the maintenance and upkeep when people are paying to use the building. And it's not just here, it's a community house and so forth, and then we utilize CPA funds or capital funds to repair those facilities. And so you can't, my point is, you can't take income in and say the program's making money when, if you had to go rent another building, you're going to pay a far greater fee for it. And they pay for the custodial, but this is beyond custodial. It's the wear and tear on the facilities, it's the, the usage of it. And I think that's something that we should consider, that there be a fund that, that rental fee goes into to help pay for the long-term maintenance of fields and buildings. I think.
I, I'm not disagreeing, Paul. I think that, you know, that gets down to what's the true cost of somebody using a facility of the town? And when somebody, you know, rents out a building for the cost of the janitors, our electricity costs just went up and they didn't pay for that. And it's the general government who's paying the electricity cost and it's, you know, and it's a revolving fund that's getting the income. The question is, how, how do you go assess the true cost of that facility, whether it's a field or a building, and allocate it to a, down to the hour, I guess?
Well, the way I look at it is someone says, we made a profit by having a camp. And how do you calculate your profit?
So would you, I guess the question would be, consider, and this doesn't have to be in this budget, a portion of any general rentals to go, rentals to go into a general fund for maintenance of some kind or utilities?
Look into that.
I'm not looking, it's not utilities. Let's be very, very specific. It is for maintenance and upkeep that will.
I guess Mark mentioned utilities, so maintenance.
Yeah, but if you're, you know, if you're renting this building for 1,000 kids a year, there's 1,000 kids that are touching doorknobs, bathrooms and so forth that aren't necessarily there if we don't rent it. And that, we don't, we ignore the real cost of building maintenance for the profit of the program. And I understand that's a different way of thinking, and that's why, it's really for the maintenance of the fields and buildings that we're renting.
Okay, so you'll consider that and get back to us. Okay, on the library budget, any questions on the library?
I guess my, my question is, you know, it has to do with, A, our many-year-old agreement with the, with the boards of trustees of Stores Library over their budget, which has not been necessarily followed to the letter, but, and that is that they propose a budget up or down, and more importantly, any contributions that, excuse me, any expenses beyond what's shown here that may actually come from another source like the Friends of Stores Library. And I'm asking the question now because when we go to the next department, I'm going to ask the same question, because they also have a Friends of Department that, and I think we treat them differently and should we? So the question is, is there a Friends of Stores Library and does income do anything to offset the cost of operating the department as opposed to buying books?
Insofar as buying books is a part of the functioning of the department, yes, they do buy books for the library. But I mean, I would say collection, you know, collection expansion, periodicals and things like that, that libraries do have to buy books to stay current.
So you, the question is, are they do anything other than purchase the books?
You're saying decide?
Yes. And what else do they, have they spent the money on in the past?
And in addition to the Friends of Stores Library, there's also a Stores Library Corporation, I believe. That's it, there's two separate entities there.
There's a board of trustees.
Board of trustees. And, you know, so I guess the overall relationship is of interest to me only because when I last read, and it hasn't changed, the contract between the town and the library, essentially it's their budget, not our budget. And, you know, that concern.
Mark, could you, what do you mean by that?
The agreement, and I have it on my computer, but I won't, I'll try to do it by memory. The agreement is that the Friends of Stores Library, not the Friends of Stores Library, the Library Association, which is the corporation, prepares a budget, will prepare a budget for the library and present it to town meeting for approval or not.
This is what we have here?
Well, I don't know. In other words, did the, did the corporation pass this, you know, that was, that agreement was written back when we took ownership of the building. They turned the building over to the town for a dollar and then the town started investing pretty heavily in maintaining the building. Prior to that, it was all privately owned by a separate corporation. And, and library employees became town employees at that time. And so we're now in a situation where, you know, the budget is now a town budget. When we merged the, when we created a strong town manager form of government, there was no modification to that agreement with the Stores Library Corporation that allows them to essentially prepare a budget independent of the town for a yes or no vote at town meeting. Now, one could argue that that's what this is and, and they've adopted it, but, but by that contract, the corporation has to have voted on and approved this budget.
But we have been known to cut their budget. Last year they did, this board did that, and I'm glad to see we're not doing it.
Well, we cut the budget only because nobody said we couldn't, you know? In fact, we couldn't.
No, actually, we cut the budget because the friend, the board of trustees supplemented by $10,000.
But wait a minute, I mean, you're asking, I mean, misunderstanding, you're asking a basic question of who prepared this budget?
No.
No, I'm sure it's the library staff and department along with our town manager.
So it was not this corporation? But you're saying that that's what the contract calls for?
By contract, they don't have to prepare it, they just have to pass it as theirs and submit it to town meeting.
Has that ever happened?
Before, before we merged the.
Okay, but since the.
No.
Okay, sorry?
No, but, but the point of this, Alex, is in theory, we can't, we shouldn't be able to, without their approval, change this budget. It's a, it's by the contract, it's a yes or no vote on their budget. That's what's supposedly.
But if it's not their budget, then we're.
Well, that was my question, is this their, did they?
So could you get back and let us know the relationship, the working, actual working relationship and how it's been.
It's a mess.
Coordinating. I guess Mark's concerned whether we should be making changes because the basic documents underneath the relationship are not how we're working, but those documents are still legally there.
Yeah, and more importantly, there needs to be, prior to our town meeting, a vote by their corporation that this is their budget.
And I take it from what you're saying, there would have, this would, this would have to be backed out of the town budget because that would have to be a separate.
No, it can be within the town budget, but it's, but it's an all or nothing.
It's the relationship between the two.
I'll give you the contract.
Between the select board and the trustees is a little awkward and what, till now, we have just been passing a budget and then they have been reflecting what we've done. So they have to pass it before town meeting also.
But I guess what, but what, what Mark is describing is their ability to propose a budget, which must be voted up or down.
Right.
And if it's part of an overall town budget, you're not really doing that.
They do do it outside. They have a process.
I mean, that would have to be a separate warrant article.
And it is.
We never do.
Okay, so then, then it's not, then I would say the contract is not being followed.
But it wasn't a separate warrant article, it was a separate line item. So when we, right now, when we're in town meeting, you know, we pass the budget, here's the number.
Right, the overall number.
Right. It used to be, we went literally items, lines 12 through 18 inclusive, and then we did lines 19 through, and then we find, then we went, the next iteration was by major department, by the major departments.
Right.
But both of those old systems, the library was separately voted on. Now we no longer do that, and the question is.
He wants to fix the, the basic documents.
Should we be? And I, and I don't think it's so important, other than if we need to make changes to our overall budget, are, are we able to make changes to the library?
I can ask, I can ask.
Dave Martell?
Yeah, for opinion.
But are you asking whether or not we can make changes, or are you asking, was this the budget voted on by the library board?
Both, I'm asking. But I, well, I know the answer to the first one, the answer, the first one by agreement is no, we can't. But the question is, was this voted on by the?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're asking.
Okay, so you'll find out also what we're seeing here has been voted on yet, or will it be voted on after we're done? Okay, council on aging.
Well, wait a minute, I got a question. I mean, I.
On the library?
On the library. You know, there's a, there's a 5.27% increase in salary for the director. Some of these other things, you have notations on like COLA slash step or whatever, there's nothing there. Is that just a pure raise?
Oh, it's COLA step.
COLA step, yeah.
It is.
Not like a merit-based rate.
And so, what is it, because I, and you might have talked about it earlier, the COLAs that were, the COLAs we approved, but, and the COLAs were 3%.
Correct.
The step schedule, is it a one, five, 10-year type of thing? No?
Annual.
It's annual.
It's a 15-year annual for department heads, professional administrative technical scale, we call it.
Really?
Yes.
So who was smoking something when they drafted that one up? We talk about getting rid of steps and labor contracts. I didn't, I didn't realize it was annual.
It's an annual with basically a 2.2 step increase, 2.2% between step increase.
And you max out after 15 years?
You max out after 15.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council on aging.
I just know that we do expand services, like you previously pointed out, we do, I propose, I'm recommending we expand the hours of the director and therefore the center by five.
The question I have is why, and the reason I'm asking why is, I'm going to pre, give my reason why is, over the years, we haven't had any issues of having a 30-hour week council on aging, and I haven't heard of, and I go to the meetings, I haven't heard of a demonstrative, demonstrative need to have that open to 40 hours a week. And I know that Karen Michaelman put in more than the 30 that she was getting paid for, but what's the, what's the genesis of saying we want to expand just her hours, 40 hours a week?
The director, Emily Perkins, our director, has, it's not 40, it's 35, it's 30 to 35. And she has really expanded the menu of programs that are open to seniors. I think she wants to continue to expand that more. I think she, I think she can do more things with the center and with the senior population if she had more time. And I think it's, you know, I don't think the senior population in the council on aging doesn't get a really significant portion of the town's budget, and it's a very, very minor way of, I think, you know, demonstrating that the town's commitment to the senior population, the people there, really like Emily. She seems to be doing a great job, and I wouldn't necessarily say this is a merit-based thing, but giving her additional hours and compensation, it's nice for her to do more and, you know, compensate her, compensates her for that and has the seniors enjoy the benefits of her abilities.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just, if I could, I don't think anybody on this board has any lack of commitment to the council on aging. That budget in four years is up 50%. And I understand what they do and how they do it, but just like with any other department, my questions would be, just because there's an expansion, and I've questioned the schools about it, questioned Park and Rec about it, is that you're going to expand services, but which part, which programs are you not doing now? And I don't see reductions of program, and at the council on aging meeting, I asked the same thing. They said, someone said we need more programs. They said, someone said, "We need more programs." I said, "Well, what's the demand for the programs?" And if you have five people, we start a new program for a language of 20 or something like that. I, I, the narrative that you gave is trying to paint the board into the corner of saying, "If you don't support this, you're not supporting the senior services." And I don't, I don't think that's accurate. I just, I really would like to, I understand that Emily's expanded services, I understand we have a ski program. At some point in time, and it's not just with council on aging, it's across the board, at what point in time do you say that the town shouldn't be offering services that are readily available through other, through other programs, whatever it is? And I want to see, I like to see something documented as to what's taken up her time for five more additional hours, and what that deliverable is for the services to the seniors before saying that it's, it's, it would be non-supportive, so to speak. No, you didn't say that, those are my words. Because, you know, again, any particular budget, I understand that council on aging isn't a big piece of the budget, but it's still up 50% over the last four years, and that's a huge increase.
Is that the veteran's benefits?
Yeah, a lot of that is the veteran's agent and benefit.
Okay, well, what's the benefit? The benefit this year is, what was it?
Seventy, as opposed to FY11 was 32,000, but the veteran's agent was $4,000 back in FY11, and now it's 31,000.
Okay, I can't separate things like that and say, "Well, it's just because of that." I get it. My point is, I still want to know that, I want to know, really want to know why we would expand it by five hours, other than saying the seniors would benefit by an expansion of programs. They could, they could benefit by an expansion of programs within the same 30 hours a week.
So, Stephen, can you get the answer for tomorrow on what the director will be doing, what her plans are for the five additional hours? Any other questions for...
Marie, I just, Paul, I just want to reiterate for people that, in FY13, our expenditures for the veterans' agents' salary and veterans' benefits were $27,500. And next year, the budget for those two items is $101,400, so...
Which means he's doing a great job.
Well, but it's, it's, it's up $72,000 from just the agent's salary and the actual benefits to veterans, and I think that's what Paul was trying to say. And so, if you look at the whole department in that time going up, you know, $80,000, $70,000 of that is, is two areas. So, it's this line, Paul, veterans' agent?
Yeah.
Seventy-five percent of that's benefits.
No, I understand.
I mean, the council on aging hasn't been a direct recipient of that.
It is, it is what it is. It's a second council on aging because that's where it was decided to be.
Right, yeah.
Richard?
I don't know if I was clear, Paul, but the, the additional time is essentially keeping the center open an hour more, and I can, if you want to know how that 60 minutes is going to be programmed every day, I can certainly ask Emily, but it was really, it's not necessarily expansion of programs, it's being open longer gives her the opportunity to do that. I don't know if I was clear, but I could certainly ask her what, if she would have planned it.
I'm not interested, I'm interested in what generated the need to open up an extra hour early, because next year, it'll be another hour early, and the year after that, it'll be an expansion of people that are open there in the morning. And again, if there's a distinct need, that's different than saying we want to expand. There's wants and needs, and that's in every part of the budget, and that's a want, it's not necess, I haven't seen the need demonstrated, that's all I'm saying, I've seen the wants.
And see if she can come up with what, and I'm sure we will be getting emails. Richard, did you, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I did. You got anything, Alex?
I did, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, I had seen you, so I went to you. Okay, Alex, you get to go.
Okay. Under the director's salary for council on aging, the requested amount is 60,256, the recommended is 52,724. The 60, is that...
Forty hours per week.
She had asked to go to 40 hours a week.
Okay, and is that recommend, is that, okay, request, is that a, is that endorsed by the council on aging itself, or is that coming?
I don't think they vote on the budget.
All right, but, I mean, okay, but, I mean...
She, she asked for...
I mean, they have this advisory board, I mean, I mean, do they have any view on the subject?
They would like to see, I think, Emily get more hours.
Okay, but, I mean, the 30, I mean, the 35 versus the 40, I mean, have they made a recommendation on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Why don't we, we'll check with them.
And this is, this is the town manager's recommendation, I don't, I mean, I, the feedback I get, the feedback I get about Emily is that they're all very, they're very positive, she's doing a great job.
Right.
She, she asked for 40 hours, because as Paul says, this is not necessarily a need function, we came forward with a recommendation of 35.
Okay, and so, I guess that's why I was sort of leading up to, I mean, because you, you thought 35 was more appropriate, so could you just kind of tell us the rationale of the 40 versus the 35?
Like I said, I think it just is, I think there's a high, high level of interest on the part of the people who are served there to have additional hours available to them and have Emily available to them for additional hours. In light of other pressing budget needs, we felt like 35 was a good compromise between what she had, what is available to the council on aging today and what, and what the department had requested.
So, do you think 40 hours could be profitably used? I mean, do you think her time could be, well, I mean, I mean, what I'm really trying to find, the debate we've been having is, why are we going to 35? And I guess what I'm trying to find out is, why isn't the request, I mean, you made a judgment that 40 was inappropriate, and that's what I'm trying to get at.
Mark, did you have something to add?
I mean, I want to hear what he has, but I'd love to hear you too, but, I mean, I'm trying to find it.
It just, in the overall, the bottom line is, to some extent, fixed, and so, everything gets adjusted up and down, line by line, throughout the entire budget to get, to hit the bottom line. And it's basically an adjustment that get made here, and got made, you know, to add a long-term seasonal because of the deficiencies in the maintenance of our parks that have been identified.
So, you're, it was sort of general budgets steering?
It was not an assessment that 40 hours would be too much for the council on aging, it was just, let's do what we can, we think we can reasonably recommend that we can afford.
Okay, gotcha.
Mark?
Yeah, Alex, if your question is, what can be accomplished in the 40 hours, I have it on authority, on rumor, that, that the current situation is that the center opens at nine o'clock, and there are people at the door at nine o'clock.
Right.
And, and by opening it up earlier and staying later, by adding an hour on either side, the director would probably be able to get more done in terms of planning, in terms of scheduling, in terms of, if you will, the paperwork you need to support an agency of that type, that can't happen now, because there are people at the door from nine o'clock till three o'clock when the, when the organ, when the place closes, and so, there's just no time to do administrative kinds of stuff. And, and I think Paul was correct in that Karen Michaelman, the previous director, she was doing it on her own time. I mean, she was there every morning at eight o'clock, even though we weren't paying her for it, and she was there every night until five o'clock, even though we weren't paying for it. And that's the way it was getting done, and that, some of that's not being done as well now as it could be.
But to your question, I understand the authority on what you were given this information, so, my, my, my follow-up question to that would be, so we're saying that the director would be the folks that is entertaining the people as they come in, for lack of a better word, and it's taking up her time?
No, it's all of them, but you have the director too, right, all of them, including the director. I mean, they've only got staff of, what, three people down there?
Right, and, no, they got more than three people down there, come on.
A few part-timers.
Yeah, okay, but...
And so, and so, look, let me, let me, this isn't about the council, it's about the thought process of how we do things in town, is why, has there been any, and this would be a great question if we had department heads here, that would be a wonderful thing I would ask Emily, is, have you thought about juggling the schedule of the part-timers there? So, some was there at nine to, nine to one, and from 12 to four. Would that, would that help alleviate the situation? And I don't know if that's happened. And, and it's not, that's not, that, that may or may not be the answer, but that's the question I would ask, have you thought about another way to handle it?
So, let's wait and hear back from the director in regards to how many hours, what she's planning on doing with the five extra hours. And also, the second question was, the COA has recommended the increase in hours, or could they support the increase in hours? Any other questions for library, I mean, for COA?
Yeah, the same question I asked about the library, I'd ask about Faloka and its relationship with any, any operating costs to do to the, the COA. Are there, I know that a couple of years ago, because of some budget cuts, they kicked in for part of the salary, and I know that backed out again last year.
I think they, I think they are, they are for financing, but they're not an operational entity.
I originally had a question.
Oh, you did?
Mark raised his hand, you let him go again.
I tried to get you first.
Okay, yeah, remember, I was a gentleman and let this gentleman draw it?
Oh, I thought it was because you no longer had your question.
And then a gentleman from the other state jumped in. By the way, I flipped over another page that had a big asterisk near a statement when we went back to that old thing about the mail-out brochures and all. And there is a line item in there that says, "Investigate the possibility of eliminating direct mailing of seasonal brochures," for the record. So, it was in there. Veterans' agent, I'm a little confused on the payout benefits. In FY12, we were, we were running $1,742 average payout, based on the figures I have here. FY14, based with the amount of caseload that you say you have, it's, it's jumped to $4,583.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble.
The veterans' benefits?
The veterans' benefits is now up to 70?
No, no. Based on FY2, or FY12, with the caseload shown here was five, we were paying, we were, it looked like we had benefit package of $1,742 per vet, per year.
Oh, okay.
Under FY14, with the caseload examined here, we've jumped to a, per year, of $4,583. And as a follow-up to that, I do understand there's a reimbursement lag, but how is that handled, Paul? I mean, we're, we're putting the money aside right now. When the reimbursement comes in, is that going back to general fund? Where, where is it going?
Well, what happens is, we will submit the reimbursement.
It comes in 75%, roughly nine, 12 months, 15 months later, but it's a line item on the cherry sheet, so we will get it, and it will go directly into the general fund.
Goes right back into the general fund?
Right, into the general fund.
And, and, and so, then we have at any one time, I guess, what's, $50-some thousand that's just kind of floating in?
At this point in time, they probably owe us that $50,000.
Yeah, always, always be in flow, okay. Do, any idea about what I brought up on those caseload figures?
I, I do not. You know, there's some that are just more expensive than others, and I don't have the individual data, or, you know...
I think you have to look at the individual cases, and what they're entitled to, how long they serve, all that stuff.
I mean, this is a fairly, and this is for everyone now, so we're not talking, I mean, these were aggregate, or average was 1,742, and it's going out of 4,583, that's a fairly significant increase. I would, I would, I would think, I would think somebody would ask that question on this figure, if these figures were, were given to you, Stephen, by this division, I would, I would anticipate we would look at something and see how that figure rationals out. I mean, it's a sizable jump, I can't...
But you mean to $7,000 to $8,000?
Yeah, it went, it went from $1,472 per, per vet yearly payout in FY12, up to $4,583 per vet payout per year in FY14. That's what's...
So, could you get back to us then, from Anthony, in regards to, maybe he's found more benefits available per family?
I think maybe we have to look at it as an average monthly, because this might be a snapshot at the end of the year, and it may not be quite accurate information that we're making the assumptions on. So, if there was like an average monthly, that might be the better.
Yeah, well, you know, whatever it is, because you figure FY12, by, by these figures, should have been, were they accurate, you think, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be also, now that they have that computer program that he's going on, that they're really being able to identify more benefits.
But he's projecting this, Marie, this is, this is a massive increase.
If I may, let, let me look at one tidbit of information, because there was one fiscal year where it wasn't within the operating budget, but there was 20 or $30,000 voted outside of the operating budget for veterans' benefits.
Okay.
So, let me find that and see what fiscal year that pertained to.
Yeah, because 12 and 13 were rocking along pretty good, and then all of a sudden, 14, it just went boom.
And what was expended in 14?
It's still being expended.
Right now, there's, there's $49,226 expended through the end of February.
And that is in, that is under this line, and that's true veteran benefits being paid out?
Right.
And that's, and that's in our, in our, our actual fiscal year?
There, those are the payouts from July 1st through current.
Okay, well, then, there's a strong likelihood that the figures prior to that are false, then, isn't it?
Well, again, as I said, there, there's, there's one year that there was money appropriated outside of the budget.
Okay.
So, that, that's one thing that I have to find.
Yeah.
But again, the caseload over the last couple of years has gone up exponentially.
Yeah, I see, it goes from five to 12, five to 12, and then three, three currents, so a total caseload of 20. Okay, well, that's likely what it is, then, the money was not shown under this category before, and that's, it's...
And one year was at least 20, if not $30,000, again, voted as a special article outside of the, outside of the budget.
Okay, that would make a lot of sense.
And you could see a scenario where...
That's, that's all I had, Marie. Other than what's already been mentioned.
Any other questions on COA? Moving on to Board of Health. Any questions on Board of Health?
Yeah.
Uh, Mark?
I guess, a question about the Board of Health is really that, when we lose a grant, as, as the...
As we have, as we have, that the document is here.
Does, does the work not go away that was related to that grant, or not? And what was, you know, what was the purpose of the grant? Because it looks like that, I guess, we're taking on a larger, that's, that's the explanation next to an increase in the director's salary.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I would think that the grant would show up as other income, and her salary would not be going up because we lost the grant necessarily, that, so the expenditure budget wouldn't be changing. The only thing that changes is where that money comes from, and if the grant money doesn't show up in income, I don't know if I'm making myself clear, the outflow shouldn't, shouldn't go up because we lost the grant, what should go down is the income, and this seems to show...
But this is only, this is only showing the expense side of it. So, this is showing only the general fund expenditures, and it doesn't show the income that is...
So, this doesn't show the expenditures that are the result of grant income?
Correct.
So, can you tell us what the Board of Director, the Board of Health Director's salary actually is?
For FY15?
Yeah, what are we paying her?
$78,225 plus $1,650. So, you got $79,875.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what were the two numbers you referenced?
The amount, the amount that's budgeted under the town manager's recommended, recommended budget of 78,225, plus we're offsetting that with $1,650 from a grant. So, she is truly being paid the combination of those two.
It, it looks like town manager's request was 78,225 instead of 79,875.
Her original request, we, we didn't have the grant approval at the time.
Yeah.
So, the grant approval came in after the original request, so that's why we were able to reduce it by that amount.
Are there other places in the budget where supplemental income doesn't show?
Grants.
Like grant, I mean, I, I would have thought that that money, even though it's restricted money, I mean, we show it for the schools, there are restricted grants, why aren't we showing it for...
Yeah, when you actually go to town meeting, you, you vote only the general fund portion. You, you don't vote those special revenues in the school department.
Right.
And here, it's the same thing, you're only voting the general fund portion, and that's what I'm showing you here, is just the general fund portion.
So, in theory, and this is, in theory, if the town unfunded the Board of Health, and I'm just being, obviously, Beverly would still make $1,650 because it's coming in from some other source. I mean, that's...
Technically, she has a grant to make that amount of money if we, you know, stayed with the provisions of the grant, yes.
Right, okay.
So, what it shows is all the years prior to that, it was still, there were grants in there we didn't know about technically.
Right.
Not technically, there were, there were grants we didn't know about.
But I remember hearing about them whenever we went up there.
Well, I remember the tobacco grant, which was supporting us for years.
Right.
You know, the, the anti-smoking grant that was supporting us for years, but I, I But I, I didn't realize that, that those expenditures don't show.
I think much of the grant money now is for emergency preparedness and her activating a group of individuals to act in that behalf. You know, we had the swine flu epidemic scare, you know, so is that, you know, how are we going to inoculate people? It was that kind of planning that these grants have mainly been for.
So I guess, part two of my question is that, and, and we're using Beverly because we're on this, but if, if an employee is making $50,000 a year, and they get a grant for, let's say, $2,000, does their salary go to $52,000? And then, when the grant goes away, we're, we're on the hook for the extra $2,000?
No.
Or their salary only goes up by what, according to the pay scale, and this is...
According to the pay scale. They would be paid according to the pay scale, and the general fund amount would actually be offset.
Thank you.
Then I guess I have a question, and I think I know the answer. This is her base salary, and all pension and benefits are based on that, and the other is like a stipend that goes on top of it.
Well, it's not just a stipend, it's just, the two combined are her true funding, her true salary.
She doesn't get the grant. The town of Long Meadow gets the grant.
Okay.
So, so the answer is, her pension and benefits are based on the combination.
Combination of the chip.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions on...
The grant plus the thing?
I still wasn't clear.
Under, under my example, excuse me, Alex, under my example, an employee is making $50,000 a year, of which 2,000 is coming from a, from a special grant, that employee's pay and benefits and everything is based on a $50,000 a year. When they retire, it's just that they were making $50,000.
Their salary, yeah.
Right, so...
On their W-2.
Their salary on W-2 is $50,000.
No.
They don't get to, it offsets our cost to have the employee.
The employee is making $50,000, they get a grant for 2,000, they don't get an increase of 2,000, it just offsets our cost.
But he said the W-2, W-2 would have to be what he actually received.
Which is $50,000.
She only receives her salary, she does not receive the grants. The town receives the grants.
I understand. So what she received from the town was 52?
No.
No, she's 50. Her salary is 50, or...
Her salary is 50.
Only 48 comes out of the general budget.
No, I understand where it comes from, but the check, but the check that the employee gets...
Is 50.
Total's only 50.
Really? But, but you said that the grant doesn't go to her directly?
It does not. So instead of using, if we, if she's making 50, she writes a $2,000 grant. The general fund makes out $2,000.
Right.
Not Beverly Herschaw.
Okay, but her salary stays the same?
Correct.
At $50,000.
And that's all she receives in her pocket?
But, but that's, what you're asking, I understand what you're asking, because the salary went from 70, 73 to 78, because it's total compensation. But the town receives the grant, the town no longer receives the grant. So in, in general fund, we only approved the 73, because there was a $5,000 grant, or whatever the number, $5,019 that was in there. So Beverly, in FY14, Beverly actually made 78,000.
Okay.
About.
73, 75.
She got a call, she got a call on a step plus, no, she probably doesn't get a step anymore, does she?
So she made, she actually made 78. The reason you're seeing the increase is, we lost the grant, the town did.
Okay.
But her salary's still 78. So this...
And, and your question, Mark, is that when her, and again, we're not focusing on her particularly, I mean, so she doesn't feel bad about the scrutiny, but the, let's say she retires, and they're looking at her high three, you think it would be the portion that the town is paying?
No.
It would be, it would include the grant?
The town is paying her with the grant, plus the grant. The, what, this, this budget only shows the, the net of what the town pays her, as opposed to the gross of what the town pays her. Her, but her salary is the gross.
Right.
Her retirement's based on the gross.
Okay, that's what I thought.
This budget only shows the net.
Okay, all right, okay.
The more accurate way to portray it would have been 78,000, and under a little footnote that said 5,000 of this was from a grant.
Right, right, okay, okay.
See, Paul, to, to your point about what, what we approve and don't approve, but don't we approve expenditures at town meeting?
You don't, you don't approve grant expenditures, no.
Okay. We only, the town meeting only approves...
General fund, water, sewer, those, those budgetary things. General fund, water, sewer, solid waste, and general fund, the four, the four funds.
Okay.
The three enterprise funds and the general fund.
So who, I think I know the answer, I'm going to ask it. So who does approve grant expenditures?
Usually the departments in charge. So, as an example, the school department gets a lot of money in grants. It's, it's basically up for the school committee to accept them, and then they are expended by the administration. The other example, I'll give you, the library gets about $14,000 a year from state aid. It's not appropriated anywhere. The way that it's written is that it's, it's a grant to them, that can be expended by the trustees, I actually believe it says, trustees of the, of the library, without further appropriation. So the library board is actually making some decisions on how they're going to expend that money.
And so could, could somebody, could one of these departments on their own decide to increase the salary of an employee?
No.
With...
That's controlled by the town manager.
Gotcha. Marie?
Richard?
Yeah. I'm muddied a water grade, you know. The community nurse, I, I looked at the progression of salary, and I'm sure there's explanations.